The full city council November twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three. First, good evening. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone at home here. The clerk will call the roll for attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bartley? Givner?
Here.
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Walden Alvaldez?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yeah, here.
Puelo?
Here.
Israel Rivera?
Here.
Jenny Rivera?
Here.
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
And Councilor Bartley is here. His mic was a little off. So with that, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyok.
And the city council.
Before we get started, because we have people online, a motion to take roll call votes for the purposes of this meeting would be to all motions to receive, refer to items to committee, remove items from committee table, place them on a table, package them together, and suspend the rules unless there is an objection. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Also, Counselor Bacon, your name was pulled. You'll vote first.
Okay.
It's the first time that I can remember Counselor Bacon going first on this, so that's what happens. That's what happens. Also, make a motion to go out of order to late file E.
Second.
Almost.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's by myself from Counselor McGee. We're going to have to see the council invite in all newly elected counselors. So motion to receive, adopt, take up final action tonight.
We could do, we should do this for all the meetings remaining.
Yeah, just for all.
Oh, so this would be good for the counselors elect for all of them.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
And we do have one here. Counselor Devine, come on down. Welcome back. All right, with that.
You can sit next to one.
Yeah, if there's a desk open, take a desk that's open. Counselor McGivern?
Almost there.
Who what? Where what?
That was Will.
What did he say? Oh, okay. Counselor Puelo, you have a question?
No, I just said almost there as president, that's all.
Oh, okay. So before we get started with Counselor McGivern, I did forget, I'd like to invite up Counselor Bartley.
Okay, everybody, thank you so much, and thank you for your attention to a very brief speech. So we did this starting last year. My good friend Pete Tomlin and I attended the mayor's reception. Of course, the mayor's here tonight. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting us again this year. But last year, Counselor Tomlin truly procured the volleyball. I'm not going to say how I did it, but I'm just saying I procured it. And Counselor Tomlin went around and got all these wonderful autographs from the inductees at the Volleyball Hall of Fame. And we thought about, you know, what to do for subsequent years, and we decided that the volleyball we have from last year is going to be donated to the Hall of Fame with all the autographs. And the volleyball we picked up this year, my, our erstwhile administrative assistant, I don't want to know how he procured it either because it's none of my business, and we will leave that on display just to tie in, as you can see above us, with the Volleyball Hall of Fame and the significance of the city, eighteen ninety-five. And it's just another small emblem of the close ties we have, but more importantly, the history that we have with the city of Hoyok, a very rich history. So I'm going to, I was hoping that George Mulry would be here tonight, but he could not attend. But I will take this volleyball and I will deliver it to the Hall of Fame in short order, okay? And so with that, I will, we'll have the former passing will be from myself to the city council president. We'll put that in the proper place, which will be this wonderful thing that Jeff discovered. Again, I don't know where he got it, but that's none of my business, and it'll be right there on display. So thank you, everybody. Thanks.
Perfect. All right. Good job. Dave. Dave.
Item number one, Mr. President, I've heard nothing as far as negotiations with the dispatchers and with the city, so I would just suggest we keep it laid on the table.
A second.
Public comment, no one signed up for tonight in the chamber? Anyone online?
No hands raised.
So no inside and no outside. On to communications, the last Counselor McGivern, because the mayor is here, do you want to go out of order to finance?
I think, I'd rather just go in order, Mr. President. Thanks. It's not just one thing, it's a lot.
All right, so with that, we'll go to communications. A letter reappointing Mr. Morris Partey to serve as a member of the Board of Appeals. This is a three-year term, and since it's a reappointment.
Motion to confirm the reappointment?
Motion to be received and adopt the reappointment. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Three is the reappointment of council on aging, there's a list of them. Also appointing the following as commissioner, and all these are for a one-year term that expires August two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments here?
Make a motion to be approved.
Motion is to approve.
Move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, on number, the new one, Jose Rafi Merced, he's new, so no problem, anybody have any problem with that? Just go along with it? Okay.
Motion to suspend the rules, appoint him as well.
Okay. Second that.
Yeah, because it's all came in as under reappointment, but.
Okay.
As you're saying, so motion to suspend the rules, just reappoint him as well. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Four is a letter appointing for the library board of directors, and this will expire February two thousand and twenty-five, so that goes to public service.
Public service.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five is the city council minutes for October seventeen and November nine.
Motion to receive.
Motion to be received and adopt those minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Devine, that is open. They were both open, but.
Please take it, it's okay. It's okay, yeah.
That's okay.
I object, with these streets sitting next to me.
I know, this could be a long night. Motion to adjourn.
You've got to pay extra for this seat.
I'm just saying I could do it.
All right, so six is a legal opinion for the section two dash one sixty-two.
Received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven is the canal road license. This is the agreement to finance. Were the agreements, is that where you've been going with these, or?
No, that's just, that's just a motion to receive. We're all set.
We already discussed, yeah.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hoyok media update for eight. Motion received.
Received.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Point of board, just through the chair, to the Jeff, Jeff, I cannot find a copy of that. Would you be so gracious as to resend it? Thank you.
Nine is a petition for speed bumps at Sergeant in St. Jerome Street, so.
Received and sent to ordinance?
Received to ordinance.
Yeah, I'm all. Did you, first off, if you read the letter, if I may, Mr. President?
Letter? Okay.
If you read the letter, I don't think they're asking for speed bumps or bumps. I think they're asking for a traffic light. And second off, it's Sergeant Street, and they've got about, you know, sixty more signatures to go, so they're not even close. But the main point is that I think they use the form, the petition form, for speed bumps, but you read their letter, they're not asking for speed bumps, they're asking for a safer.
Race sidewalk.
A safer, I don't have it in front of me, Pete, but.
Race sidewalk or blinking.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, I can't remember, but it wasn't.
Blinking stoplight.
So for, to me, that's receive and refer to public safety.
Public safety.
Yeah.
Bring it on.
Yeah, what do I know? I just work here, you want?
All right, so yeah, just, this is a petition for speed bumps, but we'll go by the information, the intel you have, and we'll send it to public safety. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to.
Hold on one second, let me just make sure that's.
Oh, no, we're not even.
Okay.
Number ten.
Ten is the.
Motion received.
Grant completion, motion is received.
Now, I wouldn't mind sending that to a committee if somebody would be willing to take it and just have a quick review, that's all, just for informational purposes, but that may have a quick chat on it. But I don't know what committee, because I want to do this more regularly than just kind of.
It's a grant completion.
Yeah, I don't want to send to finance.
Should be financed.
Well, they're so busy, though, I don't do that.
What's the.
Because they're just reviewing it.
What's the grant on, if I may?
Well, there's a few of them, but I want to, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Chair, I just want to send this to a regular committee, just for informational purpose.
You can send it to DGR.
Do you mind?
No.
Okay, just, I like to do that pro forma if I, if I.
Yeah, because a lot of the grants are governmental.
Just to talk it out, just make sure we all read it and understood it.
Okay.
Follow up with it.
All right, so ten, the update will go to DGNR.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Eleven is Board of Public Safety minutes, August twenty-third, September twenty-first.
Mr. President, can we take eleven, twelve, and thirteen as a package and suspend, and then motion to receive, all of them?
Motion to suspend rules, take up eleven, twelve, and thirteen as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eleven, I said was minutes of the means of Board of Public Safety. Twelve is the Hoyok Economic Development minutes for November twenty-ninth and August twenty-fourth. And thirteen is the Board of Fire Commissioners for October nineteenth and November sixth. All those are to be received, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Petitions, fourteen. Petition of OM Oil Gas LLC for eight twenty High Street. This would be.
DGR.
DGNR.
DGR.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. With that, some announcements, president's report, one, Saturday, December second, will be the tree lighting and parade of lights, starting at three P.M., so go to the merry-go-round, then the children museum. Up here will be music, cookies, hot chocolate at City Hall, and then at six P.M. will be the tree lighting. Incoming counselors, we just did that. Council appointment to CPC. Oh, this was it. Jeffrey sent an email to counselors.
Mr. President.
For registration for the MMA conference in January, please respond to them as soon as possible, even if you're not going to, that way they have a candidate count. So if you want to go to the MMA conference, let them know. One second. CPC, public service will be doing interviews December sixth to fill an opening, possibly two openings for the Community Preservation Committee, while people can let the counselors know they are interested anytime, any counselors can vote for whoever they want, that is true. Also, there's a ribbon cutting at Donovan's December first, Counselor Bartley?
I believe so.
At one P.M.
Believe so.
Jeffrey brought in cupcakes for everyone, so I just want to recognize him bringing in more sweets and making sure that we're taken care of, thank you very much. Last but not least, this thing has been sitting here, and I totally forgot about it, I apologize. Badges. When you're elected, Counselor Jordan told us the history about it, I went out and made sure we got it back.
Nice.
So the badges are in for the newly elected counselors from last time around. So we did get them, that's my fault, they've been here.
Do I get a new one?
But we have Counselor Izzy Rivera, Counselor Jenny Rivera, Counselor Walden Alvaldez, Counselor Puelo, Counselor Tessa Murphy Rumbaletti, and Counselor Cocaine Givner. We have all the badges here, they are in. Hand those out to them. And with that, Counselor Rivera, you're up.
I just wanted to add for December second, I'm assuming the Charter School is announcing their brand-new opening of their gym.
I think that's December second in the morning, eight A.M.
Yep, and also the community dinner is December ninth on Saturday.
Community dinner?
Yeah, that they have, the Holy Community Dinner that they have at Kelly School in collaboration with One Hoyok CDC. Just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Over here. Cocaine's is over here. He says he wants yours.
I want the give their basket.
Just saying, just saying. That is my present to you, you're welcome, no, just kidding. That's from the chief, so thank you for the chief for making sure we got those and.
We've got to keep our traditions alive.
Traditions are staying alive here.
Very important.
All right.
Well, thank you, Counselor Jordan, these are pretty cool.
Isn't that nice?
Keep it with you. I need it.
Now, I didn't spare anyone. Counselor Jordan was up here, he did give a fifty-five-minute history lesson. I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to do that to you. But no, seriously, thank you, Kevin, for bringing that back and making sure that it did stay, so.
My pleasure.
To everyone.
You deserve it, you earned it.
Now we're off to committee reports. Counselor McGivern?
President, can we revisit item fourteen real quick?
Fourteen, let me go back.
Not for a vote, but just for, I just have to clarify something.
All right, fourteen, that was the OM Oil Gas LLC, went to DGNR, Counselor McGivern.
I'm pretty sure, I haven't read this, but that this is a special permit that is no longer needed. We used to have a special permit where if you had a convenience store on-site with the gas station, operating them both together, you had to get a special permit, and there's a change of ownership, so I have a feeling that they may have been told they have to transfer the permit, but I could be wrong, but if we could just send a copy to the law department for clarification before we set up a public hearing.
All right, so also take fourteen, it's in DGNR, and send a copy to legal to make sure we're, it's being followed correctly. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, back to, there's no ordinance, but we're on to finance. Sixteen A, community advance was referred, order from Community Preservation Committee, fiscal year twenty-three CPA Wisteriahurst Restoration Order, it's been adopted, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Megan McGrath Smith was good enough to come down and join us. This is a change of scope of a project which we've already approved. It's the Wisteriahurst project, where, just a quick reminder, was the porch was rotted out, beams were rotting out, in dire need of replacement and repair. The clause was the vine, the wisteria vine itself grown on that side of the building. They came up with a, after the repairs were done, they came up with a solution with the contractor and with some, with the historic, it's an historic CPA grant itself, to separate that vine onto a trestle. And it just, it makes a lot of sense. Whether a change of scope of this magnitude has to come back to us, we're not sure, but we thank Megan for bringing it to our attention, and we just recommend for purposes of their request that we adopt it as a change of scope in this project.
Anyone further? So motion is to receive and adopt, clerk will call a roll because it is CPA funds. If you vote yes, you're voting for the amendment to the project.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Walden Alvaldez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, your approval, sixteen A. Sixteen B, command finance was referred, order from Lisa Ball, City Solicitor, settlement agreement between the city of Hoyok and the local firefighters' local sixteen ninety-three, recommend be adopted, Counselor McGivern.
If we could, Mr. President, for discussion purposes and acting on purposes, suspend two rules, suspend the rules to take up items sixteen B, sixteen C, sixteen D, and sixteen, I'm sorry, and late filed F, late filed G, and late filed H. Just as you're looking for them, and just with explanation, as you know, the finance committee met on the supplemental budget, all these items are related. And when I give my report, we'll talk a little bit about Ezekiel Plan. The late files is the mayor has separated Ezekiel's plan out of the supplemental budget, provided us with a transfer to, we can probably, I would suggest, refer back to finance committee this evening for a quick round of relook. There's a lot of concerns expressed about the monies being allocated and the future revenue support for this plan itself. The other late files is the amended supplemental budget, just with the removal of that one-line item, amended recap sheet, and then sixteen B and sixteen C are going to be part of the supplemental, are part of the supplemental budget. This is actually one contract, is the firefighters' local sixteen ninety-three contract. The money to ratify this contract, as just a reminder, we vote on the appropriations that, once a contract is negotiated, and once we approve the appropriation, the contract is ratified. Those monies are in the supplemental budget themselves, as we learned in the finance committee. So I'm suggesting if we could take all these up quick, and we can sort through with, I think, a little bit quicker, but they're all related.
All right, so motion to suspend the rules, take up B with sixteen C, sixteen D, late filed F, G, and H, all those in favor? All opposed? C is community finance was referred, the agreement between the city of Hoyok and the local union sixteen ninety-three, recommend that be adopted. D is from the mayor, supplemental budget recommended, referred to the full council. F is a late file from Counselor McGivern, which is one million dollars from the twenty twenty-four tax levy to Ezekiel Plan. G is the breakdown of the numbers for supplemental budget, and then H is the budget recap. With that, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. To try and go in order, sixteen B, sixteen C, the firefighters' contract itself. Lisa Ball, our city solicitor, was with us that evening, our mayor was with us, the president, Will, was with us, he's with us this evening, too, and I'll make sure I got that name right this time, Will. And we had a very good roundtable discussion about this negotiated contract. It's a multi-year contract, but essentially, in the budget this year is enough monies to pay for the increases that were negotiated. The total amount for negotiations is seven hundred and seventy dollars, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, five hundred and five fifty-three dollars itself. This is, would include two different units, unit A, which is essentially the firefighters themselves, as of July first of two thousand and twenty-two was a three percent increase, a two-point-five, and a one-point-five increase for four percent in exchange for the acceptance, for July one, two thousand and twenty-three. The one-point-five was in exchange for the acceptance of active shooter requirement. And the third round would be a two-point-five with a one percent to an increase of three-point-five in exchange for the acceptance of the active shooter. The unit B is dispatchers, if I'm correct, or a lot of, most of it's dispatchers. That's the cola increases of three percent, two-point-five, two-point-five. We went through the contract, as I stated before, and the firefighters' budget itself, this seven seventy-five-five-three and three-twenty-one for future years, three forty, what's more important this year is, can be seen by line item for each of the firefighters that are part of this union itself. There were some other language changes, training, compensation, and there was one other one that was brought to our attention, there was a reduction for future hireeys in the buyback formula itself, which the solicitor said is something they've been trying to do because the buybacks in most of our contracts are getting out of hand and having a severe impact on revenue for future funding of the current budget itself. I'll leave it to Counselor Jordan. Counselor Jordan did take the time to talk about something that's not in the contract, and it was just part of our discussion with everybody present, but after we, I'm not sure how you want to do this, Mr. President, but after we met with and talked and asked our questions, we recommended that the contracts would be, we would recommend the contract be accepted and adopted. The actual vote will be when we adopt the money in the supplemental budget.
Right. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just really briefly, strongly in support of the, obviously, the funding for the fire department raises, these are raises that they deserve, you know, especially with inflation and the cost of living that's going on today, these are reasonable requests of between three and two and a half percent per year for three years. The only point I did make at the finance committee, and I've expressed it to the fire chief, as well as to all involved, I've expressed it to the mayor, as well as the law department, is this is the one department that does, still does not have a random drug test policy that needs to be negotiated. It came this close in a prior budget, excuse me, in a prior year contract, and this year, again, we are not seeing this in the contract, and I really hope that all involved will make this a priority in the next contract, if not sooner, to do a memorandum of agreement and bring people together. The police department have a random drug test policy, the DPW have a random drug test policy, this department desperately needs a random drug test policy. It is a inherently dangerous job, it is employees who are operating heavy equipment, and colleagues on, and coworkers need to know, as well as the general public, that we're taking extreme measures to make sure that everybody is safe. And workplace safety is an important part of what we do, and reducing that risk as we do for the DPW who's operating heavy equipment, and obviously the police, who have an inherently dangerous job, just like our firefighters do. It's really important for all involved that this department get up to speed with a random drug test policy like the other departments. So hopefully, that will happen sooner rather than later. Unfortunately, it didn't happen in this contract, but yes, I am definitely supporting this contract because they deserve to have these raises and continue the good work that they're doing.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, I'm very much in favor of the, this contract and the work that men and women do with the fire department, seen it firsthand at my house a few years ago. And it's just a clarification that unit B is the alarm division.
That's why we keep Counselor Tomlin around, to correct the chair of finance.
Every now and then I could pick something up.
If I could, Mr. President, just to keep things simple, I would suggest that we receive these two items, adopt a committee report, and just allow our, coming up real quick, vote on the budget to be the ratification of the contract, if there's no objection.
All right, so motion to take up B and C, and it's just to adopt the committee report? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Those two are gone, which then brings us to.
If we could just take D, this is where it gets a little tricky. D is the original supplemental budget, but we just need to, we already received it, just for purposes of discussion, take up D and late filed G. H is informational with the, which is the new recap numbers themselves.
All right, so taking up D, G, and H, I'd say, make a motion to receive, adopt, take final action on H, which this is the recap sheet. Everyone comfortable with that, just to receive it and refer it to finance?
Just, receive is fine, because it's a moving target, which I'll explain when we talk about Ezekiel's plan, but it can, it can change again before we take our final vote. It will change probably a little bit, you know, once, when we get to our final vote of tax classification, setting the final tax rate.
So on H, everyone's comfortable with that?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So now it brings us back to D and G, late filed G, Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody knows, the supplemental budget was received and referred to the Committee on Finance. This is probably the most comprehensive or in largest supplemental budget I've ever seen. There's nothing wrong with that, but it is, it is a little complex in terms of what the mayor is attempting to do. But it's kind of a good thing, and there's, but there are, I would like to, would handle it this way, Mr. President, and then whatever the wish of the body is, is we treated our job in finance as we would do a normal budget public hearing. The only difference was, we did the entire thing in one evening, and it was a little, little time-consuming, but we got through pretty much line by line with the major departments, and we had a number of department heads with us, some who did not get to speak, which, which was my fault if I wasn't being clear that, you know, we were there to answer any questions. But with that, as it may, the three biggest discussions, you know, were going in backwards order, was Carl Rossi, our superintendent from DPW, was with us. The, not a big impact on the DPW budget. There was a couple of increases. We talked to Carl about, you know, his feelings, and he feels pretty solid about the budget he has. The only impact on the enterprise fund with the sewer was in addition of some ARPA monies to help pay for some infrastructure items in the, which are still in the budget, which I think we all know we're trying to remove from the budget down, down the road, which will have a difference, will play eventually a difference on the sewer, sewer rate itself. Same thing with the chief of the fire department, with one difference with the chief. You know, the chief's, a big portion of the additions in the fire department is, as I stated, that $770,000 that funds the entire union negotiated contract itself. The numbers that you see in the fire department budget are the numbers that reflect in those increases for this year. As always, we are given a synopsis, so if it's a multi-year contract, what happens in future years. The next part of our discussion was the police department. The police department was, it took up the biggest part of our time. Mayor Garcia was good enough to speak to us about Ezekiel's plan. In a nutshell, I think a lot of us understand Ezekiel's plan, which was with the help of Chief Pratt, who was also present, you know, response to not just the tragedy that happened on Sergeant and Maple Street, but to a trend that's happening in the city of Hoyok between gun-related incidents and a number of things that are going on. The plan itself is a solid proposal for, for police work, and it's certainly something that should be and will be looked at a little bit more. The concerns that a number of us expressed was within the plan was, the revenue used is an additional revenue source sourced to, not traditional revenue for the, for the budget itself. It's not property tax, rather, it's ARPA monies right now, $1 million of ARPA monies. You'll find that in the public safety budget itself, which has been removed for the purpose of putting Ezekiel's plan in, into finance for a quick two-week look, and then we will try to get that out and talk about that, you know, at the next Finance Committee meeting. So when you minus that out, what's a big part of, what's left in the police department increases is the crime and now, now, I can't even say it.
Analyst.
Analyst. I know I kept Councilor Tomlin next to me for a reason.
Just for another month, that's it. I'm all done after that.
And... He's not, he's not coming back?
No.
Oh, jeez.
No Tom Brady's for me, no?
And before I forget, there are other budgets and other things to talk about, but before I forget, in every budget that has an impact, there are reductions, and that's important to note. It's, it's something that's new. Mayor Garcia did do some last year about this time, but this time, there's, there is a series of reductions. Some is, you know, money that was allocated for supplies that is surplus and not needed, maybe $500 here, $1,000 here. Some is for surpluses in personnel, for positions that were never filled, which is, which is important. We talked to the department heads the best we could about, you know, they have enough to cover what they have to do for the next six months. The significance of the reductions is it has an impact on the recap sheet. It has an impact of available monies to be transferred for the next six months. Now, right now, we have a budget, well, pretty, pretty near-balance budget, once we do a couple of things over the next few weeks. And if the monies are reduced, it'll be less surplus dollars available if it's, if it's a bad winter. Less surplus dollars available if police overtime, if there's another, you know, hopefully not, but another investigation as, you know, such as the one that took place on Maple and Sergeant Street. And we still haven't addressed the addition to the firefighters' overtime account and anything that's unforeseen. I did have a talk with the auditor. You know, she's, she feels that, you know, there is still going to be surpluses created as time goes on. It's unknown. There can be other sources of revenues if these things do arise. Traditionally, they do arise between, you know, the last five, five months of a fiscal year itself. But with that in mind, we then, we then went into fast speed, and we had online, we had our tax collector, we had our City's Listener stood with us for the entire meeting itself. We had Kevin Logjamir from the Building Department. I'm missing a few other department heads, but there were, there were a lot of department heads there. Some, some budgets were not infected at all, so they were not present with us. A big part of the, the rest of the increases are salary increases, including the contract we're talking about, but there are, which would be the Nage contract, there are also a PSA increase itself, and there was, which, which I think is, is good news. There's been a series of performance evaluations that have taken place with, with department heads who are not part of, of the PSA and who are also part of the PSA, and increases reflecting on the performance evaluation. A while back, we received a salary comparison to, to neighboring cities and towns, and what I've looked at and looked throughout the budget itself, they seem to be pretty much in sync. It still keeps us on the low side of some of our neighboring communities, but there's some much-needed and fair increases to department heads. There are some other increases, which, you know, are more related to assistant managers and, and people in the budget that are by ordinance themselves and not by, not by contract. With that in mind, Mr. President, we, there's a ton of information to talk about. How the body wishes to proceed this evening is certainly up to you and to, to the body itself, but we feel it's a, it's a fair supplemental budget. You know, with, I think the biggest concern was Ezekiel's plan, not the plan, but the funding of the plan itself. And we're going to try, as I stated, we'll try and get that, we'll get that in and out of committee over the, the next couple of weeks. But with that, the Committee on Finance believe that our work has been complied with.
All right. Anyone further? Councilor Jordan?
Just procedurally, are we going to go page by page, I would assume, just like we normally do with the budget, because...
You would have to, but I just want to get clarification here. So 16D, which is what was referred out to the council, G and F are now coming in to replace that, correct, Councilor McGivern?
Yes. I'll remind everyone, when we receive the supplemental budget, there are at least three or four other items that come with it. There is the executive letter of the summary of Mayor Garcia. There is a work plan that came with it. All copies that were provided to every counselor, and we used in the Finance Committee. There was a, another worksheet that, and, well, the recap sheet's been replaced, but there's another worksheet with, which broke down a lot of what the supplemental budget does. So I wouldn't throw away the supplemental book, because the only difference is, and is Ezekiel Plan, which is on, is in the public safety budget itself, which is page... I believe it's page 27. Yep.
That's right.
That was luck. And we, and we do, you know, like I said, we, we had a lot of discussion on this plan and, and concerns and stuff like that, but we'll revisit that and finance if that's the will of the body this evening when we come to late filed F. So if you look at the, everything else except for page 27 is what we're voting on tonight. I don't know which is easier.
Well, that, that's the issue, because we can't separate them out. That's why they came in as two late files, to then act on them in that fashion.
Understood. The, the late filed is not in the line item form, though.
Right.
The late files...
That's why I'm trying to make sure.
It's what we're voting on, but if you look at it, it's, it's, it's a summary, the way I see it, and the budget is line item, which I think is our traditional way of looking at it, is, you know, any department that has, not every department has an increase or decrease, but it is the way we've done it in the past.
Right. I just don't want to vote on this, knowing that we took out the million because it's being referred to finance, but if we vote on this, then it's in essence you're accepting the million. You see what I'm saying? Kind of like a financial transfer. You can't, we can't, as a council, just arbitrarily separate them because we don't want a certain amount. We have to have them come in as separate orders to act on them, which seems to be what they were trying to do with the late files.
I hear you. I want to make a suggestion. Once we, once we do the review, we're going to do it page by page, if there's any motions to cut the line item, we will act on those one at a time. Once we get to the end, it's, it's we vote on the budget as amended, and we can note on our final vote, as amended, Ezekiel's one plan, $1 million, has been removed from the budget by the mayor prior to our vote. So it'll be any, any cuts, and Ezekiel's no longer part of it.
Or maybe we just cut it, knowing that it's going to come back.
I have concerns about that, but I'm not against it. But I just, I talked to the mayor and the auditor. Procedurally, it might be the best way to do it, but it kind of, you know, the document, the documentation of that vote will be, we voted against Ezekiel's plan and eliminated the money, even though it's back in front of us.
In a, in a different order, that's why. I just want to make sure everyone's on the same page, because it is a little confusing. Okay?
Tell the Finance Committee about that.
I know, I know. I'm just trying to catch everyone up, even if...
It was your motion to put it in finance.
Actually, it's under your name. No, just kidding. All right.
No, this one's not.
All right, Councilor Jordan, you are still up.
Yeah, if, if we're ready to get going, we'll start chugging along.
No. Next was Councilor Rivera.
Okay.
I just wanted some clarification on some of the things in the $1 million. Are, is all of it not in the budget, like not no raises, or like the housing navigator position or any of that? Because if it is, then separating it out doesn't kind of make sense.
Councilor McGivern?
The mayor is going to correct me if I'm wrong, but the $1 million on page 27 is actually labeled as Ezekiel's plan. And Councilor Rivera had some, you know, we probably had some of the more detailed questions of that plan itself, and I know he's asking, because I was wrongful in trying to speed him up at the Finance Committee meeting, and we've talked that out, so I think we're good. But there are things, and I think the way to put it, Councilor Rivera and everybody, is there are items in the budget that are funded by ARPA, not just Ezekiel's plan. There's nothing wrong with that, you know, it's just that, it's the long-term impact on the budget that's, that's the concern. So if we're not against an increase, the position you talked about, or we're not against, I can't think of a couple of other budgets, but there are a couple where ARPA is used, and that's in those supporting documents I just talked about. You'll find all that in both the mayor's letter and in the worksheet itself. And I think, I think it was the auditor who gave us the other, the second worksheet that highlights where the money came, comes from, which is, is important. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Because the mayor's here, make a motion to suspend rules to allow him to answer questions if we have questions on the budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
But there's another one.
All right. With that, Councilor McGivern, you just want to start going by, page by page by page?
Finance is their job. This is, this is all yours, Mr. President.
All right, well, I'm just asking. All right, with that...
We will be here to, we'll be here to answer any questions. Almost everybody was present at some point for the Finance Committee, so I don't think there'll be a lot of questions, maybe just a little debate. If, if there's any, any, any questions, we'll certainly try to answer them. A lot of department heads have joined us, a few department heads have joined us this evening. Our tax collector is here, and I think there's a couple online I saw earlier, but, and of course, the mayor's here.
All right, so...
Mr. President, I just have one general question.
Sure, Councilor Aiken, you're up.
Thank you. So in the initial supplemental budget, the tax increase was 7.51%. So with the Ezekiel Plan backed out, does that change that percentage to what, 6, 6.5% increase in the taxes?
Mayor, you have the...
Six.
$600,000 for every 1%? I don't, this is where, I understand where this would cause confusion, because the supplemental, we're talking about leveraging alternative revenue sources outside of taxation. So I don't, and I think Tanya's on, there will be an impact because of the supplemental. So, I could be wrong.
So 6%. Okay. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll, I'll just slip page by page. Stop me if you... City Council, page 1.
There are no changes in City Council.
Two. Mayor's office. Three, auditor.
Yeah, I have one here.
All right, so with that, we're on page three. Councilor Jordan?
Yeah, just overarching theme is, point number one, I'm not sure what's going to happen with Ezekiel Plan, but Ezekiel Plan added would increase the levy by $4.5 million, which is a 7.5% increase. That's a massive increase in property taxes here in the city. Unsustainable type growth. You cannot be increasing the levy by 7.5%. And even 6% at $3.5 million is going to be a lot. And who knows what is going to happen with this Ezekiel Plan between now and then? Again, this is unsustainable growth. So some of these increases have to be cognizant, just, not just on the Ezekiel Plan piece, and I know it, soon we'll, we'll address the sewer rate issue at some point here shortly. So I'll save those two for, for the respective committee meetings. But some of these increases relative to pay raises, 2%, 2.5%, 3%, you have to do that. You know, people deserve to have raises. We have to have cost of living adjustments. You start getting up to 10%, you know, type salary increases. This, we're in no position to be giving out those kind of increases. So you're going to hear that as a reoccurring theme here shortly. There's a few other areas, but that one, to me, it's just unsustainable. We cannot have this kind of a levy increase, period. So anyways, to that note, I support the pay raise for the city auditor, which was in line with the 2% that most of all the employees got. But this $5,000 for extra professional accountant, I would make a motion to cut the $5,000 for additional professional accountant services.
Second.
So the motion is to cut 51103 by the $5,000. That was seconded. Councilor Mercer Rambeletti, you are next.
I'm sorry, can you come back to me later, maybe?
Yep. So right now, page three, 51103, motion is to cut by $5,000. Councilor McGivern?
I, I understand the, the position of Councilor Jordan, and I certainly understand the motion, but I think this is not an area that we spent a lot of time on in finance, but we have over the years. And the professional accountant in the auditor's office, I know there's been a turnover in personnel in Tanya's office itself, and the comparison of this particular, particular job to other communities, the $5,000 adjustment, more than just a salary in... job to other communities of the 5,000 dollars adjustment, more than just a salary increase, more than just a COLA, it is an adjustment. There's a number, number of them in the budget reflects bringing this important position into, into the area of what other communities are paying to. The significance of that is, the argument is, we have seen a number of professionals over the past 10, 15 years who have taken similar type positions within, within, within our departments, solicitors, Board of Health, the building department, you know, come in, be hired, trained or, or whatever they have to offer, and with a little experience be grabbed by another community for a higher salary. And it's like a revolving door where we provide the, the initial beginning of a person's career, only to see us lose them to Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Springfield, East Hampton, Southampton, and so on. So the 5,000 dollars is, is above a COLA increase, but I see it as an adjustment that is needed for this position, the services for this individual who brings the, what they bring in, in terms of, of, of work to the, to the auditor's office itself. And I think, I, I will vote not to cut it, but to keep the 5,000 dollars in the budget.
Anyone further, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, just want to point out fiscal year 22, this line was funded at 40,000, then it went up to 61,000, then it went, and we voted to go to 70,400, now to 75,400. This is what I'm, I mean, everything the gentleman just said is all true. I, I'm not going to argue with these points. The point is, you cannot spend money you don't have. It's that bottom line unless we're going to just max it all out over here and just send the levy through the ceiling. I mean, seven and a half percent increase in the levy? I mean, this is unbelievable to have a four and a half million dollar increase. We've got to trim something somewhere. I mean, if there's an argument for, I think we've done pretty good by this position to give all these kind of increases, 40 to 61 to 70, to now go to 75? I mean, to keep it at 70, I mean, for this year and maybe we reevaluate, I, I don't think that's unreasonable.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to point out that, or just reiterate that we do continue to lose people to other communities. We just lost our city engineer who was being paid well by our standards. So we've spent many years underpaying compared to other communities, and unfortunately, other communities don't care whether or not we can afford it. So we have to figure out a way to keep the people we train so that we're not just training people to do better in other communities somehow. So I don't know what the solution is other than financial, but if there was a different type of package that we could offer people that would keep them here without a pay raise, I'd be happy to hear about it, but in the meantime, I think we need to figure out how to stop training people and allowing other communities to take them from us.
Counselor Vacan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to note that if this all goes through as it's proposed, the rough estimate is that the average homeowner's taxes will go up over $300 a year. And we've already had the taxpayers coming to us during this election season telling us that the high taxes are one of their top concerns. So I really think we need to keep in mind who has to pay for this budget while we're looking at it. And I do understand the line by line arguments relative to the positions, but we have to keep in mind what we're doing to the people who have to fund the budget, and that's a huge tax increase for our taxpayers. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will also echo that we have to think about what we're going to be doing to the people who are paying for these increases, and if the quality of the employees is not there, if we're losing employees, if we're not able, if we're, we're not only losing employees, we're literally losing money every single time that we lose an employee and we have to retrain someone else. It is not financially sound for us to keep losing so many people. It's one of those things where if, you know, sometimes what we've done as a city historically is we try to, we try to save a penny by spending a dollar. Like, we are not going to be able to get the quality services that our residents deserve. This is when trash pickup gets impacted. This is when code enforcement gets impacted, when we are constantly having to train another person and onboard another person. Every single project slows down. All of these orders that we file that are asking our city employees to look into traffic studies, to make improvements for sidewalks, if we can't keep them, that's going to delay us actually getting the services that all of our constituents are asking for. So, thank you.
Counselor Rivera.
You stole my thunder. Nah, so I, I hear the arguments with regards to how costs are going up and everything, but I think for me, what I was going to say pretty much, it costs us more to keep retraining people and to keep having, going through the cycles all over again. In, in the Treasury Department, for example, we've had so much turnover that we've had to hire consulting groups to come in and help us put things back in order. That costs us way more money than actually having consistency. I think consistency is key here, and for us to continue to be consistent, sometimes we have to compete with neighboring communities. It's not fair, again, that we have to compete with communities that don't have the same problems and the same struggles that we have, but ultimately, that's part of the game. And if we stay behind, then we will continue to lose. But yeah, thank you.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add too, that doesn't even take into the account all the positions we have empty because we can't fill them because we're not paying enough. So right now, we're just trying to pay the people we have to keep them, to keep doing the work they're doing and show them that we appreciate them. And then we can start working on filling the positions that are empty because we have plenty of those as well. Thanks.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to state something very briefly. I mean, obviously, you know, I'm a city councillor, but I also work as a legislative aide, and I see a lot of movement happening and coming, coming into Hoyo. There's a lot of new businesses coming that is going to be coming online, which will help level out that, you know, that feeling that, oh, we're not going to be able to afford this. We will be able to afford it, we just have to find something to level out, and, and we can't keep exhausting the people in our department. We just can't keep doing that. It's not going to work. So I just wanted to state that thing.
Before, Joe, the mayor, mayor, you had a question or?
No, I just wanted to offer, Mr. President, a point of clarification on the Ezekiel's plan and impact to the tax rates so that people aren't confused.
Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, I just offer just a little bit of clarification. This is every reason why I filed that late file order, because I'm going to take full responsibility and feel like I failed in explaining in totality on the Ezekiel plan and what the special article means and potential impact it may or may not have, which is, you know, why we put that late file order, so we can send it back to committee and have a better discussion to clarify some of these points. Understand that the revenue sources identified to fund that makes up that $1 million is both ARPA replacement revenue as well as revenue interest that we've collected. The only contributions to the actual budget that we can rate, that, that I look forward to or that's in front of you, to raise and appropriate through taxation, that supports the Ezekiel plan, is the additional support for the Board of Health as well as the crime analysts for the police department. So that, you know, that's through, not from ARPA revenue replacement or from revenue interest, but instead to raise and appropriate through taxation. So I'll, at seven and a half, again, those revenue sources is what we're proposing to leverage to cover those costs, not to increase by a million dollars taxes. And then also, there's more points into that, which we're going to talk more about in a future finance committee meeting, and I hope to offer a better presentation on the plan. But um, I, you know, the, the, a, a lot of the work in that plan, there is alternative revenue sources becoming available soon beyond year one that will cover that outside of regular taxation. The only big concern which I've shared, which I've leveled, was that the 13 additional officers and the impact it will have to the budget after year one, when the ARPA revenue is no longer, that does have an impact at a future budget. Just want to make that clear because I don't want it to go out to the public assuming that this $1 million, we're going to raise your taxes seven and a half percent.
All right, so with that, Counselor McGivern's up.
Thanks, Mr. President, and thank the mayor. And that's one of the main reasons why we want to put Ezekiel plan back in the finance committee for, for a quick look to make sure we all get on the same page with this because our concern is about, in particular, the 13 additional police officers brings back memories of what happened in Springfield, and Springfield went eventually bankrupt after using an alternative resource to hire, I think it was 80 or 100, you know, police officers, different numbers, different community, I understand that. But I, I, again, you know, the, the proposal and the plan is, is solid in terms of meeting what's going on in the city. But we, we need to figure out the future impact of, of if we were to go forward with the hiring of new positions. We've done a very careful job of not letting this budget grow since we were under a finance review in 1992. Additional positions, additional expenses have been thought out, both by a number of different mayors over the years and by the city council whenever proposed to, to, and we've, we've, we've been told, you know, by DSO and, and by our Moody's and people that we have done an incredible job of keeping this, this budget stable under the circumstances of property tax being a major revenue source. We don't choose property tax. I'll remind everybody, the state chooses the tax, taxing scheme. The state doesn't want to touch property tax. The state, you know, prefers to get their, their income revenue from income tax, which comes out of everybody's check and don't think about it twice. Sales tax, which no one thinks about three times, maybe when you get a big item, you think about it. You go out and have a beer after this meeting, you're paying, you're paying a food tax on that beer every time you drink one. And yet, the state tells the communities that need this revenue so desperately, property tax, which is unfair, and this is what I really wanted to say. The, the increase in the levy and the impact on, on property owners should always be taken into consideration when it's affordability. For God's sakes, in about three or four months, Jenny and I are going to be on a fixed income. So I'm thinking about it, but I'm also thinking about, it's not just salary increases, salary adjustments, as I would call some of these we're about to get into, and I'll just, I think I'll just say this once tonight, each of our employees are facing the same craziness in the cost of living out there, food prices, gasoline prices, just, just living today in this country. You know, you know, and I'm not blaming COVID or blaming whatever, but we have seen inflation go up at a rate that's been nothing like it since the 80s, and, and it's impacting every individual who works anywhere. And, you know, I, I think we have done a tremendous job between our, our new personnel director, Mayor Garcia, our, our, our law department, and, and a number of people who have tried to make sense out of who's working the hardest, who's, who's performing for, in their positions, whose salaries are out of whack, and try to help out, and try to help out both individuals. People I talk to out there, nobody wants to see their taxes go up, but I think when you talk common sense, they understand that because they're paying more for eggs, they're paying more for milk, they're paying more when they go to the gasoline pumps. And the, you know, the, the help, and this doesn't help the cause of the argument here, but those extra dollars are going to dry up, and they're going to dry up quick. And that's why we want to look at Ezekiel plan a little bit closer to, to talk about the impact in future years. But right now, what we're looking at is existing positions and what, you know, we'll go line item by line item, appears to be fair adjustments to wages to keep people doing the jobs that we need them to do. And I hope everybody takes that into consideration as we vote.
Counselor Rivera.
I'm good. I just had a question, but it was answered.
Okay. Counselor Jenny Rivera.
I just would like to echo what a few councillors have said, and I do feel our employees need to, to get a raise or their wages, and we need to keep them. As some employees in the city, to what I understand, have gone like 15 years without even seeing a raise. So if we gave a raise back in '22, how long before that did they even see a wage increase? So in order to keep our employees, we do need to do better with them. And if they lasted 15 years without a raise, we need to keep them.
Anyone further? All right, seeing none, motion was to cut it by 5,000. Clerk Cololo, if you vote yes, you're voting to cut 51103.
Vacan?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rambeletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tomlin?
No.
Four ayes, nine ayes. I mean, I'm sorry, four ayes, nine nays.
Your vote that does not carry. Page four. Page five, stop me if I'm going too far.
Yeah, I have one on five.
Five, so we'll stop at five. This is the Office of Assessment.
Yep, I'd like to make a reduction of 8,500 of the $10,000 raise for the chief assessor.
Second.
To make it 1,500.
Is that 51105?
Correct.
All right, so motion is to cut 51105 by 8,500?
Correct.
And that was seconded.
Under discussion.
Under discussion, Counselor Jordan.
Okay, since I'd already spoken twice on the last one, I get to renew.
No, this is, it, it's a different line item.
Exactly, right, that's why I'm getting this, go through a couple of different points. One is, I'm looking at a budget recap. We can say what we think it is, but I, we know what it actually is, and that is, on this here, it says that we're going to have a levy of 64.5 million dollars. It's currently 60 million dollars. That's four and a half million dollars. So if there's some other source to reduce that, then put it in here. And with the Ezekiel plan coming out tonight at about, well, I should say at 1:00, 1:05 this afternoon, this went down to 63 and a half million dollars. So dollar for dollar, it's down a million bucks. So if there, the whole Ezekiel plan is over $2 million. But it, it's actually appearing on the recap sheet as a million dollars. So ergo, the, the statement, a million dollars of, of Hoyo tax levy money is going towards it, and when it was removed, $1 million came off, dollar for dollar. So this is directly impacting, with this off, and I don't know, apparently we'll probably cycle it around a little bit more and, and pass it in some other form in another two weeks, I would assume, we'll be right back up to a seven and a half percent increase. As of tonight, we're voting on a 6% tax increase. That's massive, that's unsustainable. Meanwhile, I would also point out, you're watching the Hoyo Mall assessment has dropped over a number of years. All those dollars are being shifted over to the residential taxpayers. People are not facing two and a half percent tax increases. Year over year over year, residents in this town are facing over a 5% tax increase year over year over year. That's when the levy went up a million dollars. Now we're talking three and a half to four and a half million dollar increase in the levy? I mean, that is not sustainable. And, and who knows what they're going to get handed from other abatements or whatever, and gee, I hope there is this series of great growth because we're all waiting for it, but when you look at adjusted new growth, it isn't showing up here, not much. You know, you're somewhere between a half a million and three quarters of a million dollar estimate, we only hope. So, I mean, again, I take a fiscally conservative approach to these things, and as far as the whole, you know, sermon on the mount for, about people getting pay raises, absolutely. But we have to do it in a sustainable manner. Give people two, two and a half, 3% pay raises and consistently give those. Give people two, two and a half, 3% pay raises and consistently give those. We can't be in a situation where we're giving away 13% pay raises when we're asking the poorest people in Massachusetts and shaking them by their ankles to get more money out of these people. I mean, it's just unsustainable. We have the highest residential tax burden in Massachusetts. When you take tax bill divided by the average per capita income, coupled with the burden in the highest commercial rate in the state, again, it is not sustainable. So what is sustainable? We got to give employees a two, two and a half, 3% pay raise annually. We're doing that, you know, with a lot of these different positions. I see the assessor is in for a 2% pay raise. Well, guess what? The chief assessor should get a 2% pay raise too. This is a position that went from 68,800 up to 75,000 in this budget. Already has received a $6,200 raise. Now, oh, that wasn't apparently good enough. Let's give you 10 more. So, I mean, we're going to go from 68,800 up to 85,000 in the course of two years? Not sustainable. Not sustainable. And, but if we go 1,500 a year, you know, this type of an increase, that is sustainable. And this is the deck of cards. I'm, you know, I would love to be Loin Meadow and just dole it out and we can give people premium, you know, extra money and have it and no worries. And people love, they vote tax overrides in Loin Meadow and Amherst all the time. That's not our deck of cards. Our deck of cards is Hoyok. Poorest people, basically in Massachusetts, effectively, okay? People who would, 300 and something dollars on the average home, God forbid if you have a house that's 300 or 400,000 or more. I mean, you're really going to take a whack this year, on top of all the other whacks. It's getting to be really a burden on working people or seniors who are living in their homes, but for the fact that many of their homes are paid for, they're living on a Spartan Social Security. Those are the people I'm talking to. I don't know, maybe there's somebody else getting voted in here by some other cadre of people. But these are the people that keep electing me here, so they're like heaven. Put an end to it. Put some restraints on it. And that's, that's what I'm going to continue to do because my marching orders here by the voters are crystal clear. And that's what I'm going to continue to do. And if I'm in the minority, so be it. At least I can live with a clear conscience. I do support the argument though that people do need raises. And if there's people going 15 years with no raises in here, that's a pretty short list. And they should sit down with the mayor and find out why they've gone 15 years without a raise. That's, that, if that's a list of more than three people, I'd be surprised. So anyways, in support of the $8,500 reduction, for the obvious reasons, 2% is plenty on top of the 6,800 already received. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern first.
The City of Springfield, same position, $125,000. Chelsea, same population as Hoyok, $111,000. Westfield, bigger population, but 97, 865. West Springfield, 86,288. The list goes on. And again, we're, the city did a comparison besides doing a performance evaluation. This individual has been with us, I believe, for 20 years. I'm guessing on that one a little bit, but the knowledge is incredible of a very important position. Because if our values are not correct, we all pay for it and eventually we don't have any revenue or the correct revenue coming in. Her predecessor went 15 years without a pay raise. He left the job. She looked to leave the job earlier last year. Training in this position isn't the training that most positions have in our city. This position is, takes, you have to be certified once you get hired by the state if you're not already certified. And you need that professional classification that allows you to do something that is very complex and a lot of work itself. This is an adjustment to keep someone we desperately need in that position. And I think of a lot of the votes that we're taking this evening, this one needs careful consideration. I don't like talking about averages. I don't like property tax. I agree with everything's being said about the people who get hammered the most by property taxes, are people who are on fixed incomes, are people who, you know, are living in their homes. It's wrong. But property is also an investment which is handed down afterwards and is, you know, sometimes used for different things. It's still wrong to have municipalities depend upon property tax. But again, it's not our choice. That $300 is $25 a month. Quarterly bill is $75 a quarter. I'm willing to pay a $75 extra quarter to support good people, to make our, the strongest employment, employees of the, of Western Mass and to make our community even stronger itself.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
So, due to the president to the mayor, I wanted to clarify a statement or a point that Counselor Jordan made in regards to the funding for the Ezekiel Plan, the subtraction from the Ezekiel Plan from the budget and the difference between the two numbers that he's having issues with. And I was hoping that the mayor can clarify that for us, please.
Mayor?
Just to clarify my points, it's not two or three million for the Ezekiel Plan. Two million of that is actually ARPA revenue replacement dollars.
Is the mic on?
Yeah, just make sure.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
The you're mute sign.
Hey, hey, you're muted.
I'm not muted.
Rookie mistake. I just, yeah, so it's not a two or three million dollar Ezekiel Plan. $2 million ARPA revenue replacement was what we talked about when we first put together the budget. So that's just a fund gap. And just to level with the concern, fiscal year '25, when we plan for a future budget, that is something we're all going to have to put our heads together and figure out how to close that funding gap. But $2 million is ARPA revenue replacement for the budget that we've talked about in the past. 1 million is for the, and actually, it's not even the full 1 million because we're talking about interest revenue collected, which we'll talk about, and ARPA revenue replacement. And then the largest contributor, I think, that you're going to find in this, in this budget, probably for this year, is going to be the 1.5 million to cover the soar deficit as well as the 700,000 for the Firefighters Union. That's where the real increases are coming from. For this, but in a future budget, when there is no more, we'll have to make some hard decisions on how to close that $2 million gap that we've depended on for the last, I think, four years, maybe three years.
Counselor Anderson Burgos, all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify, Hoyok is not the poorest community in Massachusetts. In addition to that, our constituents, my constituents definitely have quality of life issues that have to be addressed. And we need to pay city employees to address them. So I just want to point that out. We all deal with a lot of the same complaints and issues and very real neighborhood problems. So until we can figure out how to fund our positions and keep our valued employees, we won't be able to serve our communities the way they really deserve it, whether they're on fixed incomes or not. And we do know that many in our communities are on fixed incomes. And even those constituents want quality services. So, thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, just a couple of points. This proposal on the Ezekiel Plan, again, I don't want to go into too much detail, but suffice it to say, these are dollars that are coming to the city in grant funding, be it ARPA, be it opioids. If they weren't spent on some of these things, like ARPA in particular, they could be spent towards fixing, you know, some of the already existing costs that we have of the city. It isn't like it's, we have a finite amount of money. And by spending it on new cost versus existing cost, it's still a new cost. You know, for example, I give the analogy of Chickapi who received 5 million less in ARPA than we did. They only received $34 million. We received 39 million. They took $10 million and just put it into savings. We, on the other hand, had to use 8 million of our 39 million just to balance our budget. And we have no plan to address that. That 2 million is about to go away. Then where are we with all of this? And we just keep layering on more cost and more cost because once the assessor goes up another $10,000, that's permanent. That's permanent. So, you know, we can sit here and say, oh, you know, these are all wonderful people, and most of them absolutely are, you know, and have been. But the fact of the matter is, is I think you understand if you've been working here for 15 or 20 years, the finances of the city. And the reality is, is if we could have sustainable two and a half, 3% pay increases, then this is what you would be dealing with. It would be budgetable. And I'm just saying, it's easy to just keep saying yes, yes, yes to all this expense. There will be a day of reckoning. I hopefully won't be here at that moment. But it's, it's coming. You can just see it. This levy is going, is getting carried away. And there isn't some magic pill. I've seen these, you know, oh, it's going to be marijuana. That's going to save the day, you know, don't worry. And we baloney the public and tell them, oh yeah, marijuana is going to bring in this big pile of money. That never panned out. What's the new magic pill? I'm waiting to see what that one is. What's coming next? You can just see. The math is the math, and you can just see where this is going. And if we didn't have this ARPA money, we'd already be having this conversation already because that 8 million dollars saved our bacon. And let's just keep layering it in. And you know what? We'll see how it all turns out. It will not have a happy ending. I can rest assured of that.
Counselor Rivera, do you have a hand up?
That was depressing. Thank you. For me, I, I mean, we don't have to continue to fund certain departments at the level that we do because there are other departments that make a lot more money and don't put out the same effectiveness and efficiency. Maybe we can hold them accountable. Just saying, because there are certain departments, as was stated, that it's been a long time since they gotten raises. But there are other departments that have larger, stronger unions behind them that help them get the raises that they need on a regular, on a regular basis. So, I mean, you don't have to approve everything. And the thing that, for me, that kind of, I'm going to vote yes on it is because this is not necessarily a position that is not, not producing, right? They, they're doing their, they've been doing their role. And the person's been in the role for a while now, right? You can't necessarily just train somebody up like this. They have a system in place. They do what they need to do effectively and efficiently with the capacity and the resources that they have at the moment. There are other departments that aren't functioning on the same level. So I would say we take that same attitude with other departments too that aren't functioning at the same level. And make sure that we do get to the point where we want to be, right? Where it's safer for the taxpayer. But it's just that I think that we're looking in the wrong places. A deeper look will help us better understand where to make the cuts at. But thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Murphy Rambaletti.
Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification. If we're going to compare ourselves to Chickapi, Chickapi also has a stormwater fee that we don't have. So it's just, it's not the same. You can't, our deficit's different. It's all different. Thank you.
Anyone further? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut. Five, one, one, zero, five by 8,500.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Gibner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rambaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, ten nays.
Wait, your vote that doesn't go through. Alright. Page six?
Yep, I have one here.
Okay. What is it?
This is relative to land court expenses. $120,000 was requested in the budget, and it was only funded for $40,000 by the mayor. It was short by 80 from the original request, and somehow it went up an extra 20. So I'd like to put it back to what was originally requested of $120,000. So I'd like to reduce the $100,000 on line 53050 by $20,000.
Second.
Second.
Motion is to cut the $100,000 by 20 at 53050 on page six. That was seconded, under discussion. Anyone? Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for that change.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Gibner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velas?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Six yeas, seven nays.
Your vote that does not pass.
True. Postage was requested at $35,000 and was put in at 30. And then it went up an additional 30. I would like to reduce that by 25,000 to give it the original five was to be fully funded request.
Second.
Alright, so same.
This is line 53420.
53420, page six, cut it by 25,000.
Correct.
Counselor McGivern first.
We did have a chance to talk to our acting treasurer or now about to be permanent treasurer. This is a reflection of postage being brought back together, all inclusive into the department itself. Over the years, we've gone back and forth on where the money for postage goes in the budget. And Rory did tell us that he is, his office has taken back over the entire needs of all departments for postage.
Counselor Gibner.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I was going to voice the same.
Anyone further?
Under discussion?
Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, so if that's true, then why was only 35,000 requested in June? And then there's no corresponding reduction in any other budgets? Or was it just a complete miss? Theoretically, if we're consolidating, we just did this budget several months ago, and the total requested was 35 and given 30. So if there's now this putting it all in one pie, there should be reductions in the other departments.
Counselor Murphy Rambaletti.
I do see, like, if you go through, they're cutting postage in, am I wrong? Am I right?
Uh, mayor?
I thought he's cutting.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, Mr. Treasurer is online, willing to, can probably answer it much more likely than I can. But we did cut when we proposed the original budget, and there were a few others that we saw. And I believe there was some confusion between the department head and us. But we caught it, and we cut it too in this supplemental. But yes, what's in front of you, and I think the treasurer can probably explain it better than I do. He has data on why that number is reflecting the way it is right now in the supplemental.
So is it that the 35, mayor, was not the correct number? It should have been higher in the first place?
Well, there's a lot of things in the budget that were shortened as part of the exercise so that we can get through and in, and a balanced budget into the new fiscal year and then revisit it during this time of the year. It's all part of the exercise.
If we want to suspend the rules and maybe ask the treasurer?
So motion to suspend rules for any department head to answer questions when their time comes up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Rory?
Oh, he's not here? Okay. How about I'll, maybe we can come back to it?
We can revisit, so.
I'll move, I'll withdraw my motion for now and maybe they can speak and get back to it.
534206 to maybe come back to it. Anything else on six? Seven?
Tax collector? I'd like to make a motion.
Alright, Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, I'd like to reduce fifteen thousand dollar pay raise to a fourteen hundred dollar pay raise, being two percent. So, to reduce that by thirteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second?
So, motion is to cut five one one zero one by thirteen thousand, six hundred. Under discussion, Counselor Jordan?
Same logic. We need to be giving sustainable pay raises. We cannot give a seventy thousand dollar position a fifteen thousand dollar, twenty percent raise when seniors are out here keeping body and soul together in order to buy their groceries, as Counselor McGivern eloquently put it. Uh, that's all true. Um, come on, twenty, twenty percent pay raises in this atmosphere? When you've got a levy that's skyrocketing? I mean, are we totally tone deaf here, or what? You get a two percent pay raise like all the other employees get, or three percent, but fifteen thousand? No, I don't think so. I, I, I cannot support that in good conscience. This position received a three thousand dollar raise approximately last year, and something in that, I'm open to hear other suggestions, but fifteen thousand? Come on.
Anyone on this one? Counselor McGivern?
The, um, the position itself, as, as we know, is part of something that is in the process of, uh, being looked at. Our treasurer, our tax collector, um, our, our finance teams themselves, and, and the mayor's proposal for the CAFRO, CAFO, and the, uh, and so on. It's something that I think we all are looking to change, to solidify, um, the handling of finances, the budgeting of finances, the accounting of revenue, and reconciling of that revenue itself. Uh, this position is, is part of that, and certainly gonna be part, um, of the change somewhere I'm anticipating in the, the near future. My understanding is there was a, a performance evaluation done for this relatively new individual who was with us this evening. Um, also, not looking, but an offer was made to this individual. I hope I'm not speaking out of term to go somewhere else. And the talent that she brings to the table is, uh, not just, not just being the, uh, the granddaughter of the great William Burns, who was the tax collector when I first got here. But she brings, coming back to our community after some, uh, traveling. She brings a talent into this, uh, this team that is recognized, I believe. I won't speak for the mayor, but by a number of people to understand it. It's an adjustment. I, I, I understand it's a large adjustment, but I'm just trying to make sense out of to why it's in, in the supplemental budget, and why it's proposed with, uh, out speaking for everybody, but it's a consideration. Um, the, the biggest increase we're gonna see for salary increases is when we get to the fire department. Seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That's it.
Alright, anyone further? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I, I, I can't support a fifteen thousand dollar raise either, Mr. President, so uh, uh, I, I think the employee should get no more, certainly than the assessor, who's been here, as we just said, over twenty years. And so now we're giving a brand-new employee, no matter how talented that, that person is, a fifteen thousand dollar raise, just like this. So, I, I can't support it. But I will, I will support a raise equivalent to what the assessor, uh, receives. So, I'm gonna say, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to cut it by five thousand dollars.
So, there is a motion-
Second?
And it's seconded instead of cutting it by the thirteen six, to cut it only by five thousand, and that was seconded. Let me just get all this down here. Anyone on Counselor Bartley's motion? In line? Nope. For me, just real quickly, I know when, uh, the person came into this position, uh, there was negotiations, but was capped at the salary line that is there. Of which it was, I understand, at some point they'd come back around to try and adjust it to be more in line to other communities. So, it's not that they're asking for a larger raise. It's in line with what was negotiated at the time of the hiring. So, this is where they're trying to catch it up. Also, with regards to this employee that we're talking about, understand the number has gone up, but the amount of changes the employee has put into the office has brought in revenue back in that we haven't seen in quite some time. So, the systems that are being put in place, the manner in which the collections are now being done, in essence, with the prior history as to the hiring, is why the adjustment is being requested. From my understanding, and from me being part of that process back then.
Motion to suspend the rules to allow the president to debate an item?
I'm not, I'm just answering the question.
Oh, okay.
Not debating.
Okay.
If you want me to debate, I'll come-
No, I was gonna suspend the rules. You were very eloquent. I'm just saying, um, okay.
That's where the halls in me. It's all good. Alright, so with that, uh, first motion is to cut it by five thousand. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut it by five thousand.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern? McGivern?
Sorry, no.
That's okay. Murphy Rambaletti?
No.
Poello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, um, ten nays.
So, that one didn't pass to the original motion, which was the thirteen six. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut it by thirteen six.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Are you saying that we're going to cut it?
Yeah.
By my, the original motion?
Original motion, which was to cut it by thirteen six.
No.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rambaletti?
No.
Poello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, ten nays.
Alright.
There's only two yeas, I think.
It was, I think it was two, two eleven.
Yep.
Two to eleven.
Yeah, sorry about that. Two yeas, eleven nays.
Anything else on seven? Uh, I was informed Rory is online. Do we wanna go back to six?
Sure.
Going back to six, which would be postage, five three four two zero.
Just to, whatever his, if you could just help us with what happened there.
Rory, are you there? You're muted. His hand's up. There it is, there it is. Can I hear you now? Yep, can hear ya.
Okay, great. Yep, sorry about that. Um-
Do, do you want me to go? Rory, do you want me to go through the question? Okay, good. Alright, thank you.
No, I, I, I have a question. I, I, I'm sorry. I was having some technical difficulties here. Um, the postage line, um, was, the request was twofold. Um, and it's already been discussed. Uh, number one, uh, more offices are using our mail machine. Um, we have one of the only mail machines of its kind in the city. Uh, allows for certified mail, uh, large parcel pieces, um, and other types of postage that we hadn't originally been expecting. Um, so in other departments where they may not have been, it might not have been hitting the postage line, what was happening was you might have in the police department and the law department, um, those individuals going out to the post office, paying on their own credit card, um, or through some other means, and getting reimbursed. So, they were coming through as reimbursements from other lines. Uh, that practice is being discontinued. Um, at the same time, a number of different postage rates are going up. We had anticipated the postage rate going up after July for regular first-class mail. Uh, but all types of mail are now increasing, and there's another increase due sometime in early twenty twenty-four. Uh, so those are the two main reasons, as I said at finance that night. I'd be more than happy, uh, if this line is not in the treasurer's office, if we wanted to find a different budget for it to be in, but it is where it is now. Um, we are making some changes to the physical space, uh, so we will have more of a traditional mailroom, uh, where departments will be able to log in. Uh, but this is where it is, and we will need those funds.
Counselor Jordan?
Rory, again, thank you for jumping on. Appreciate it. So, you had requested in June thirty-five thousand for this line. Did something change from June that you're now getting new information? Like, why wasn't this considered in the original budget? And then my second question is, if we're now increasing it by thirty thousand, can you please give us a breakdown as to where the corresponding thirty thousand dollar reduction is in the other departments?
Well, I, I can explain the first part very easily, and I, I, basically, without rehashing everything I just said. Um, you know, the five thousand was because we knew there was a first-class postage rate increase. Um, at the time that the budget requests were coming in, uh, it was in May, um, you know, or even earlier than that, quite honestly. Um, and so we didn't have the full picture. Um, since then, uh, a number of new departments are starting to use our postage machine. Um, so the amount of postage we're going through is, is at a pretty rapid clip, uh, based on what we had originally expected. And then the USPS recently just came out, um, uh, with a guidance saying that they expect to increase a number of different types of postage, um, in January or February of twenty-four. Um, so we don't have the full picture on that. Uh, we don't know exactly what it's gonna cost. Um, we just know that rates are going up. Um, now, as far as the other thirty thousand or, or twenty-five, I, I guess it would be, um, you know, I, I don't know exactly where those cuts are. I think you will see through, um, the budget, a number of small cuts, uh, happening. Uh, there's also two cuts in my office, um, at least two cuts in my office. Um, two large ones in the personal services line, uh, because of a position that was unfilled at the beginning of the year, is currently filled, and another one that we're currently interviewing for. So, that's money that we're able to get back. Um, but I, you will see a series of small cuts throughout the budget, um, that should equal, uh, at least, if not more than that, uh, the excess. Uh, but I, I don't know exactly where the mayor made those cuts, uh, just that this is the amount he supported going forward with.
Okay, is, is the mayor here?
He was here.
Alright, cause I guess my question is, how did he get to the thirty thousand number? And I guess the question would be, where, where's, if this is budget neutral, then the twenty-five should be coming from other departments. That's-
You know, what I would say, you know, Counselor, you know, I, I, I agree, you know, it is a moving target, right? So, if, if, if you wanted to, you know, I'd prefer there to be no cut. I'd prefer not to have to come back. Um, but, I mean, postage is one of those lines where I can't imagine the council's gonna want us to not be able to send mail out. So, um, you know, if a cut were to be made now, uh, and you wanted me to come back, or it was to move to another line, you know, I'm open to that. I would just ask, cut it, it, you know, cut it all the way down. Um, but without the mayor there, without being in front of you, and I do apologize, I do normally come in person. I was unable to this evening, uh, because of a commitment with my son. Um, but, you know, I, I, we don't need to go, go on and on about this. Uh, I certainly defer to you.
I appreciate that. What I'm just saying is, again, this is my job. You have your job, and, and I have my job. My job is, when people say, we're taking twenty-five thousand from over here, and we're putting it here, I need to have evidence that it actually is moving from here to here. That's what I get paid to do. And I have yet to see anything that says it's coming five thousand from police, five thousand from fire, three thousand from DPW, and this ties out over to here. Otherwise, it just looks like we just added thirty thousand to postage.
No. I, 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 listen, I, I completely agree, and, and-
Yeah, that's all I'm saying.
Some of the other unknowns, yeah, and just, just so we're clear, just some of the other unknowns that, that are out there is, um, we were recently informed by, uh, the service that we currently, uh, use to produce our tax bills, uh, that they are no longer going to be subsidizing our postage at the same rate that they had in the past. We, we've asked them for quotes. Um, there's a chance I might be coming back asking for even more than the original amount of, of this thirty thousand dollar increase. And I do believe there's a presidential primary coming up. Um, you know, under some of the new state laws, um, we have to mail out additional information, uh, for each election. And it's unclear whether or not we're gonna get reimbursed by the state. So, you know, again, that's why you might not see a dollar for dollar. I absolutely appreciate what you're saying. Um, but it, it is a moving target. Um, I would ask, you know, for, uh, most of that, if not all of it to, to remain. Um, you know, if you wanna report on this, you know, throughout the year, I'm more than happy to provide it. And again, by next budget, maybe it's in a different office. I, I'd be just as fine with that as well.
Would you be, would you be comfortable if we gave you half the money, and you came back for the other half with a report?
Yeah, when you say half, what, what do you, um?
Well, they're asking to give you an extra thirty, so if we said we only cut it by fifteen, and then six month, or four months from now, or whatever, you come back and say, yep, we needed this, and we give you the other fifteen. Would that be-
Yeah, I mean-
Would that be fair?
You know, yeah, I'd, I'd prefer there to be no cut, honestly. Um, so I, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, alright.
Just an update, counselors. Uh, the mayor had a leave, but he will be zooming back in in a little while. Just put that out there.
Alright. So, we move on. I'll, uh, I'll just make my, uh, I'll make a motion to cut it by fifteen, that line item.
Second?
So, the motion originally was to cut it by twenty-five. Now it's down to fifteen. That's five three zero two zero. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Out of the room.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rambaletti?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Poello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Madam Clerk, I've, I've returned.
Yes.
Please record me as a no. Thank you. This is Juan Anderson Burgos.
Six yeas, seven nays.
Okay.
Wait, your vote, that one does not pass.
Thank you. Believe we're on page eight?
Let me just do this. Alright. To page eight. Anyone on page eight?
Please, I, I mean, if there's other people that have motions, I don't wanna take all the thunder here, but, um-
Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, city solicitor, I would like to reduce that, um, by six thousand, one hundred dollars in order to afford, um, another increase here of nineteen hundred dollars, two percent.
Second?
Second.
So, the motion is to cut five one one zero one by six thousand, one hundred. Counselor Jordan?
Yep, so here again, our city solicitor, ninety-one thousand. Uh, this position just keeps going up, 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 up. And to ninety-four thousand, now we would give another two percent increase, eight thousand dollars. Again, a nine, what's that, uh, eight or nine percent increase to a hundred and two thousand, you know? We're getting, this is getting carried away with these type of increases, year over year on these positions. It's, this is unsustainable. I, I, I can only imagine where this goes. Eventually, this will just keep hockey sticking right up, uh... It's unsustainable, completely unsustainable. These should, these positions should be getting annual COLAs, period.
Counselor McGivern?
Yo-
You know, maybe annual COLAs will make sense when we get everybody up to a comparable pay that reflects the position and reflects both Western Mass and comparable communities. Springfield, 176,000 plus. Chelsea, same population, 136,000. Westfield, 107,000. West Springfield, 112,000. I think the numbers speak for themselves, the individual certainly speaks for herself in what she's done since she's retaken over this office and solidified a very important department that provides a lot of service, not only to, not only to the city and working people of the city, but also to the community at large itself.
Counselor Givner?
I'm all set.
The mayor has rejoined on Zoom.
Okay.
Counselor Jordane?
Again, supply and demand. We have never had a problem filling this position, as best as I can tell, and at, I'll bet you, if you posted this position at $94,000, you'd have no problem. 35-hour work week, the whole nine yards, with extra vacation has been given, flex schedules, move out of town. I mean, we've literally bent over backwards to do every possible conceivable thing for this department, and yet now we still have to have another round of massive increases after we just did significant increases. I mean, again, unsustainable, we're just, it's like monopoly money. We'll just keep going. And by the way, we're not in the financial position of Springfield. We wish we were in Springfield's financial position, and these other communities are massive in size. We cannot compare ourselves to Chickaby, excuse me, to Chelsea, or to Springfield, and we wish we had the tax base of Westfield. Westfield is extremely, doing extremely well financially. We're not in that situation, and anybody that's in these roles, you know what you're signing up for, and if you don't, at certain point here, if you can't appreciate what kind of financial condition as a public servant, you know, I mean, give me a break. It's just, this is, this is not servant leadership. This is a race for gold, as far as I can see, in some of these positions.
Counselor Rivera?
So I think, for me, it's going back to consistency again, being consistent. I'm sure that if the position was open, that there would be other people lined up, but then we would not be on the pace of consistency, right? I think over the last 10, maybe 12 years, we've had a couple of different lawyers, possibly, right? It's a consistency. If I'm reaching out to the city solicitor's office, and I want to go back 15 years on things that, or cases that have come up, legal cases within the city, because of the lack of consistency, I can't, I technically struggle to get that information, and that is a problem. I'll reiterate, if, if this would have been handled during the times, this would not be such an increase all at one shot. That's the crazy part. So like, pushing the can down the road long enough, eventually it bottlenecks, and right now, this is where we're at. It's unfortunate that we have to get to this point, but I think another clarification to make is, the population in Chelsea is 38,000, that's pretty close to Holyoke, to my, to my understanding. But, again, it's unfortunate that we have to get to these points, but the prices in other neighboring communities, they outweigh what we give, and to not have that consistency, it's been hurting us as a community overall, and it's been costing us way more than these raises in the last 15 to 20 years, in a variety of different lawsuits, in a variety of different ways where one solicitor has to pick up something else that another one possibly didn't do right. So it's a variety of these type of issues due to the lack of consistency. Thank you.
Counselor Murphy-Rumbelletti?
Thank you. I will try to keep it brief. I really hope that, for the sake of this long meeting, that we're not going to keep having the same conversation every single department, but, you know, I set my expectations low for this. I just, I gotta, I gotta say something about the fact that we are accusing city employees of reaching for gold, and like, this, you should know what you sign up for, when you sign up for it, like, what a way to talk to people who work really hard for this city, and honestly, like, no offense to everyone else who's in this room, but I'm, I am, I will reiterate, as long as I need to, that I actually worked at City Hall for five years, and if we're not going to pay them well, then maybe we could treat them well, and we really don't do either. We don't talk to them like they're human beings half the time, we don't pay them enough. So I didn't know that when I was signing up to work for City Hall, that a majority of my anxiety was actually going to come from this body. So I'll just say that, I'm going to continue, as long as I am on this body, to advocate for city employees, because if I was watching this right now, I would just like, go ahead and look online and find a grossly paying job in the private sector that gives me the day after Thanksgiving off, and no one gives me any kind of grief for it. I just, I can't even wrap my brain around that, and I also just really hope that we don't keep having the same conversation every single department for the rest of the night. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
I think when we look at this department, we have to look at the big picture. We all know, to begin with, a law decree doesn't come cheap, a law decree is expensive. Passing the bar is important, keeping up with certifications and keeping up with law, understanding municipal law is certainly all part of it. It wasn't that long ago that this department wasn't filled by the current staff of assistant, solicitor and assistant city solicitors, and we saw a lot, a lot of outside counsel spending to the tune of, we have saved under our solicitor, Lisa Boal, and the current staff, who are doing more and more litigation themselves, handling much more internal than six years ago, eight years ago, 10 years ago, saving the city $200,000 plus. And I think, in order to, not reward, but in order to keep that spirit and to keep that type of work going, we have to recognize and make the salary, you know, meet what the service being provided to the, to the department, to the, to the city itself. And I believe that, you know, Lisa Boal has stood up and fits that work performance evaluation and fits the, this salary itself for what she has done, you know, and what she has to offer in the future for the city of Oylak.
Counselor Jordane?
Yeah, basically, again, I, I'll try and keep it as brief as I can on some of these points, it is a reoccurring theme, but I will just simply say, as far as, who here, it's easy to sit in here and talk about, "Oh, so-and-so is this lovely, wonderful person." It's less attractive to talk about, you know, people, the average citizen who's maybe not paying attention, or is busy working a third shift, or is, you know, out there. My job is to point out these things are going on, and these type of increases are going on. I've never played to the audience here of, of the city employees. I've made it clear that what I offer is basically steady increases like this. When I see things like this that are wildly out of line, and not necessary, there's no problem filling this position at $94,000 or $96,000 if we do that. You know, it's, again, as far as Chelsea, you're correct on the population. The point I wanted to make about the difference on Chelsea is, it's a suburb of Boston with an extremely high cost of living, even more so than us, which is going to command, if you took that indexed for salaries of Boston versus Holyoke, I mean, come on. We need to be fair to people, but we also need to be fair to taxpayers, too. Who, this budget and these taxes that just keep going up and up and up on this community, and by the way, take a look at where we are. People think Holyoke isn't a poor, one of the poorest communities in the state. Take a look at the per capita income stats, that's a fact. And, and yes, maybe we bounce up and down off the bottom every other year or so, but we're always right in the bottom five, and sometimes we're the lowest, sometimes we're third from the lowest, or fourth from the lowest, but we're right there. But as far as residential tax burden, it's right there, too. And who is sympathizing with that situation? I don't, it just seems like this is so out of balance, but I mean, this is the council that we're dealt with, and how the perspective is. All I'm saying is, we need to have reasonable growth, not these big increases. It's just not sustainable, but this is why we're going to get the levy that we're going to get.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, that is correct. This is, this is, dear public, this is the council that you have been dealt with, and for six years, I've sat here and had to make hard decisions, and every year, it's nothing new. Taxes, as a matter of fact, everything across the board, the cost of living goes up, and nobody, and I mean nobody, and that includes me, I don't want to pay more, but I come to the realization, a fact. The fact is, cost of living goes up, and if maybe some of these counselors would spend some time with the department heads and the people that work in this city, I don't know, like, a couple of days ago, they had that potluck, and, you know, some of us came to celebrate and share in these moments with the hard-working people of this city, who, by the way, provide those services that you all deserve. I mean, that is what you're paying for, is the services. So when you see services not happening to you, then you can reflect on some of the city counselors that you've been dealt with, that keep cutting and cutting and cutting and kicking the can down the road. This is ridiculous, this is not something new. It is not anything new, and for you, or for anyone, to stand and say, "I'm the fiscal watchdog," well, thank you, but I am the fiscal watchdog with responsibility. We have a fiscal responsibility to continue the services in this city. You are one, but the city is whole, and we represent everybody across the board, and the moment services are interrupted to these people, I'm going to tell you right now, you think they're going to complain about their taxes, or they're going to complain that their trash wasn't picked up, or any other services that the employees of the city provide is not being met? We can't keep saying, "We're, I'm going to save you money here, and I'm going to cut here, and I'm going to..." Well, you know what, those cuts come with consequences, and I know, because I've seen them over the past six years. So don't get on a pedestal and scream all these things, and make all these accusations, and give the, "Hey, children, gather around the campfire, let me give you a little scary story, so I can freak you out throughout the city, so that you can call your counselors and argue and say, 'Oh my God, you've raised my taxes.'" Like, if this is something new, "Oh my God, is this my first day?" I think so, right? Anyways, thank you.
Counselor Givner?
I'm all set, Mr. President.
All right, just.
Mr. President?
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. So, the comment that I wanted to make about this particular department is that, from my perspective, there was a very collaborative approach that, between the city council and the law department, that resulted in the reorganization, the rewriting of the entire structure of the department, that happened hand in hand with the city council, through the ordinance committee, the council as a whole, and the law department. Now that was a unique reorg within a department. This that we're talking about now is a separate matter from that, and I have to say that the reorg that we did in that department, I think, is only happening in one other community. So I think to be looking across the line as a straight-line thing is forgetting all of the flexibilities, changes in positions that we created and gave latitude in that department, and is looking at it simply at one person. And I really think that it's true that we do want to have city services, but we can't rake the baths and push the homeowners, in many cases, homeowners who have paid for their homes, who are now very worried about being able to keep them as they're facing retirement or recently retired, struggling with a fixed income. And for us to be looking at these, the bigger the base salary, the bigger the raise, and that goes into next year's base when we have no free money to patch the holes. And it truly is not the time to be increasing the base costs in our government when we're going to lose that free money. It just really is the wrong thing to do. And so I support these cuts, not because I'm against the positions, but because we have to look at the sustainability of our community for all of the people. And we're not doing that when a person who owns an average home in our city has yet again another tax increase, this time not a couple hundred, this time over 300, when they're already telling us they are hurting. And I cannot believe there isn't a city counselor in the room who did not hear this when they were campaigning. And I just think, yes, we have to look out for our departments, and I think we have been looking out for our departments, but we have to be reasonable, we have to use some limits to what we're trying to do here, and balance it out between the people that have to pay it and the people that work for us. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'll just say quickly, I'm not debating, just to point a reference, and I think Counselor Bacon said it correctly, what we're doing tonight is not against department heads or employees. That rhetoric has to stop. This council, many have worked very hard to change the atmosphere, morale in City Hall, annex, wherever else. We all have. What is happening tonight is, five months ago, five months ago, we passed a budget. Five months later, we're adding to that budget. It's called checking balance. That's our job. It's not against department heads, it's not picking on people, it's assessing, checking and balancing what is before us. You may not like things that are said, maybe they could be said better, but I'm not going to allow people to try and say, "We're against department heads," that's ended. That ended when I took up here. The morale was awful. It's gotten a lot better because we all work together, so stop it. What we're talking about is numbers. Either vote it up, vote it down, and that's it. So on the table now before you is cutting the 8,000 by 6,100. Anything else? Clerk will call the roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado-Lez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy-Rumbelletti?
No.
Cuello?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tomlin?
No.
Four yeas, nine days.
That one does not carry.
Next up, next line, 51102, reduce by 8,800 from 12,000 to 3,200.
Second.
Second.
So five one one zero two, cut by eight thousand eight hundred. Our discussion, Counselor Bartley.
You mean Jordane, thank you. Yeah, yeah, again, uh, this would, this would result in a two percent pay increase. Uh, the other thing is, you know, if I'm a firefighter, or I'm a cop in town, I could also easily argue, I'm a DPW worker picking up trash, where's my 10% raise? How come I'm only getting two, two and a half percent? You know, that's, that's the other point. That's why we need parity on these reviews. Those jobs are just as important. A trash worker, or a firefighter, or a, a highway person, those jobs are just as important. I could easily argue, just as important as any one of these positions. So why don't they get more than two and a half percent? Where's the advocacy for that? Why isn't the mayor coming in and giving everybody 10%? Why is, why is it seven hundred and fifty thousand for how many people? You know, in the fire department, dozens and dozens and dozens and dozens of people are making up that amount of money. These type of raises to go and take an eighty thousand dollar, uh, position and give it each a six thousand dollar raise? I mean, come on, that job already went up to eighty thousand dollars. These are positions that weren't even there. We've added jobs here. Thank you, done.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern.
The positions we've been talking about and looking at don't have the advantage of a collective bargaining unit to, uh, speak up for them. Many of them have not had that two, three, four percent, uh, co-increase every year for, as, as most collective bargaining, bargaining units have done for their, for the other employees of, of the city themselves. But again, the, uh, two positions here are part of the team that have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars out of this particular department for the taxpayers. And, and I think to keep this team together, the mayor has done a pretty good job of evaluation and putting this in front of us.
Anyone further? Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut five one one zero two by eighty-eight hundred.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Coelho?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Four yeas, nine nays.
That one does not carry. Anything else on page eight?
Nope.
Page nine.
Personnel administrator?
So page nine.
Yep, reduce from six, the six thousand minus forty-three hundred to a seventeen hundred dollar raise.
Second.
All right, so cutting five one one zero one by forty-three hundred. Counselor Jordane.
Yep, this position again was already about, reevaluated and increased by, you know, sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars already, and now we're going to go up another six thousand. So there, there's, the sky's the limit on these pay raises. I, I hope citizens are getting these kind of raises from their jobs. Um, so we'll just hope for the best.
Anyone further? Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the forty-three hundred cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Coelho?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, ten nays.
We vote that does not carry. Anything else on this page?
Nope.
Page ten. Page eleven. Page twelve. Page thirteen, fourteen. Fifteen.
Fifteen, I have one.
All right, fifteen.
Uh, reduce the, uh, Director of Conservation and Sustainability from a ten thousand dollar raise, reduce that, um, by eight thousand seven hundred to a one thousand three hundred dollar raise.
Second.
So five one one zero one on page fifteen, cut it by eighty, eight thousand seven hundred. Our discussion, Counselor Jordane.
Standing point, um, again, treating this position the same as everybody else. Um, these, these increases are too much, in my, in my view.
Counselor Rivera.
So with regards to, uh, this position, this, uh, particular individual has put in a ton of work since they've gotten in the position. They've landed us millions, I think mo, a couple of millions in grants, um, and it has a couple of projects, huge projects moving in the city, that will help bring a lot more people to the city and improve the green space in our community overall. When they come to the council, they present, they come with an actual slideshow, they actually come prepared. If we're going to hold them to a standard where everyone should do the same, other department heads should be doing the same, that are making way more money than they're making. So at the end of the day, that, it's kind of a moot argument to say, or not an unfair an argument to say that we're going to hold them all accountable to the same standards, but some of them prepare when they come to meetings and actually do the work that needs to be done, help us, um, move forward, um, with the minimal services that they're actually in, and resources that they're providing, because I don't even think he has an administrative assistant. So, um, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to add to that slightly and, or just reiterate that this position, um, just recently secured a million dollar grant for more work in the city. So, you know, um, I think that's admirable, and, and they continue to secure funds to do work in our city. So I think this is totally valid.
Anyone further? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
Givner?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Coelho?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, ten nays.
Anything else on fifteen?
Nope.
Sixteen. Seventeen, eighteen.
I got one.
Counselor Rivera on eighteen.
Yes, um, so the crime analyst from forty thousand to five thousand, cut it by thirty-five thousand, with the intention of just holding it there. And whenever they, they do hash out what's happening with Ezekiel's plan and all the other things, they can actually add the money in however they see, I mean, with the ARPA funds or whatever it is. But I think for the time being, to get to some of Counselor Jordane's points about, um, cutting down budgets and cutting down certain things for right now, it doesn't necessarily have to be forty thousand. It's not an actual position yet, we haven't filled it yet. Um, later on, again, through Ezekiel's plan, that, that crime analyst position is actually in Ezekiel's plan, so it's going to be another conversation to bring it back up and bring it back later. I think for the time being, um, cutting it down to five thousand and saving us thirty-five grand, um, will help out in a sense. Thank you.
Anyone further?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make an amendment to cut it completely in a second, but the, the reason I'm gonna, I'm going to do that, um, is because I don't think we have, the position's not created. There, there's no ordinance. And as for a lot of these positions, we're supposed to create the ordinance first and then fund the job. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to cut it by forty thousand dollars.
Just let everyone know, Counselor Bartley is a hundred percent right.
No, I second that.
I need a position that doesn't exist.
Get him, Mr. Bartley, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay.
So motion is to cut the forty thousand from non-line item XXX. I second. Counselor Jordane, sorry.
Right. I'm strongly in favor of this position. This is something we've wanted for at least ten years, but I do have to agree. The point is, we do not by ordinance have this position, so it cannot be filled and cannot be funded until we have it. So technically, this is appropriate to make this cut.
All right, so clerk, Counselor McGivern.
I, I mean, I agree and disagree at the same time. Unions can create positions like collective bargaining without ordinances. The mayor can certainly propose to begin the creation of a position by putting it in the budget, but at the same time, cannot be filled until it's, until it has a supporting ordinance itself. The, the only reason I say that is, it's, it's half a dozen, one sixty other, but there may not be enough money to pay for this position until the next fiscal year. And I agree with Counselor Jordane, that this is the, where this particular position would be the grant writer, the grant cha, chaser, which we've seen good work from police officers. Police officers who should be fighting crime, not chasing grants, although it's important. I think we finally got a mayor and a chief of police to listen to the creation of this position. We're at the witching hour as far as the budget goes, because once we set the tax rate, there's no more appropriating additional monies, you have to find it elsewhere.
Counselor Rivera.
The, the, the grants position is a separate position from the crime analyst position, right? Um, the grants position actually got zeroed, um, which doesn't make sense to me in a sense, but that, maybe they couldn't hire somebody. But the crime analyst position is a valuable position, but for me, it's not for the same reasons. Uh, for me, it's for the, hopefully, this crime analyst will be able to help our department better prepare when they come to actual meetings and present on data with, with research backing it up. Um, the crime analyst hopefully will be able to provide them with, um, uh, some research background that allows them to be able to, when they present plans, they actually have research to back up the plans that they're talking about. So like ten-year, ten-year crime data, uh, arrest rates, calls, not just based on what they tell us, um, when you actually have a crime analyst is different. Um, they're, they're actually, that, they're actually profession, they went to school for that. Um, so, yeah, I, I, as much as I think this is an important position, um, I don't, I mean, you guys spoke about the ordinance piece, that was news to me, but for me, the way, the way, um, the funding mechanisms work, I'm glad, um, Mr. Bartley brought up, um, the ordinance piece, but at the time, the way I was thinking about it is, if, if, if we're not going to spend it now, then we might as well just take it out now, and then later on, when we figure it out, we put it back in. But thank you for the ordinance piece, it makes sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. President? Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just, just one more thing, and I, I, I heard what everybody says, obviously respect everybody's opinion. Mr. Bartley's going to clarify one more thing, too. In my opinion, unions can't on their own create a position. I, I don't think that's at all possible. What unions can do is propose in a contract with the other side to create positions. Now that's possible too, but still, I think that's subject to ordinances. So unions can do a lot, they have a lot of power, and we, we're, we support unions clearly, but they can't just, uh, ad hoc create a position, to the best of my knowledge.
Counselor Givner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have just, in looking at, um, the line item in Ezekiel's plan, I see that, um, this position would be funded through this supplemental budget. So even though it's part of Ezekiel's plan, the funding would come, um, through the budget being proposed, whereas other item, you know, other items in Ezekiel's plan come from like ARPA funds or opioid settlement funds. So, um, I would hate to nix it out, since I think it is a really important position, um, if we can't then re-add it when needed, if it's needed, if we can get it in, I don't know, before the next budget. Um, so that would be my argument for voting to keep it.
Counselor McGivern.
I don't think I spoke, but what, what I said was collective bargaining can create positions through, uh, collective bargaining and funding. Um, oftentimes, I, I do know that an ordinance has to follow, not all the time, but it is something that we've seen periodically, where the collective bargaining of both sides, bringing positions before us within the, uh, MOU or MOA itself.
So with that, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut the forty thousand.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Coelho?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Eight yeas, five nays.
Your vote, the forty thousand is cut. Anything else on eighteen?
I could, Mr. President.
Yeah, Counselor McGivern.
Not a motion, but just as reported, uh, through our finance committee report, we've seen a few of these over the pages that we've been going through this evening, but the seventy-two thousand, cut of, uh, seventy-two thousand seven hundred and twenty is a lieutenant's position that is currently vacant. It is not eliminating a position with this cut, but merely eliminating the funding for the rest of the year for the, uh, for what would be the eighth lieutenant itself. Um, I'm just pointing that out because this money will come off the, uh, the recap sheet itself and not be available for the rest of the year, not be available as a surplus to transfer anywhere else. And there, there are some others, this is the most significant one we've seen yet, but there've been some smaller ones, uh, to date, but this, and there's a couple more significant ones coming up.
Thank you. Nineteen. Twenty. Twenty-one.
If I could, Mr. President, real quick on twenty. Just, just to point out, we, we, I don't want to, we went through the entire contract for the firefighters, and just about all these increases under personnel are supporting, and if passes tonight, we'll ratify that contract. And that's the number that we've been talking about. The increases, as Counselor Jordane said, are the, uh, the, uh, three percent, four percent, and, uh, down the road, uh, uh, future impacts down the road, you know, the, the two and a half, three percent. Um, it's not unusual, but, you know, supplemental budget is similar to a, uh, to a transfer in the middle of the year, but it's the appropriation that we vote on to, uh, give the firefighters their, uh, their negotiated, uh, wage increase.
Anyone further? Twenty-one. Twenty-two. Twenty-three. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six. Twenty-seven.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Counselor Jordane.
I think it would be in good form for us to delete the million dollars on the Ezekiel plan at this time, and then we have the other one that's sitting in committee. I'm, I'm concerned that we pass this with this sort of like on the side. I think it would be in good form.
I'll second that motion, Mr. President, um, and retract my earlier statements, um, we, we, on record, we know we have, and we've done this often in similar, such, not similar, but other situations, we have a transfer going to committee, I believe, of the, uh, one million dollars for what's in this line item called Ezekiel's Plan, Operation Safe Streets. So it's, it's, I, I just, probably the correct thing to do, just to be safe.
Yep. So with that, there is late file F, which is twenty twenty-four tax levy, one million to Ezekiel Plan. So I'd make a motion, or should have a motion to receive, refer to finance on the late file.
So moved.
Motion suspend our rules, take it lightly, my final order, and then do.
Yeah, it was already taken up as a package, so.
I'm sorry. All right, thank you.
So to that one, to finance, all those in favor?
I agree.
Back to twenty-seven, which is, motion is to cut five seven eight oh six by one million dollars, if I'm reading the line item right.
Yep.
Five seven eight oh six by one million. No discussion, seeing none. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
Left the room.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
Yes.
Nine yeas, three nays.
Your vote, you approve that one. Twenty-eight.
Yeah, just real quickly, Mr. President, on school, no cuts here. I really don't have a basis to make a cut or say this is great. I asked the school department for the backup on these numbers. There is a new person and how this is all, so it's on a hope and a prayer and a faith that this is all accurate. And hopefully, it's being picked up by non-tax levy dollars, but by state aid to support these changes, especially related to charter school busing, which is pretty much what's going on here, is the big hit for the three-sixty-two. So, no changes, but I did want to just share that information. So, just kind of have to roll with it, I guess, for now.
Counselor McGivern?
A point well taken. We were led to believe, and I believe it is out of the conference committee, that these numbers are, are being reflected in the school department budget itself. That school spending will have to be made one way or the other. And I think we get one final look at this when we see the, the final recap sheet and, and reflection of what the school department will get versus whatever the state final budget is. The state has failed their supplemental budget this week. It's in conference committee. It has a number of increases, not all about municipalities. I think most of those votes have taken place already, but they haven't finalized their fiscal budget yet, which is important to do, or it's going to, they're going to lose whatever's in the supplemental budget and won't be able to go forward. But I, I agree with Counselor Jordan. I think we have a good person in this position with the schools, and I think the superintendent is, is not trying to throw a, a curveball at us. I think it's just what the numbers need to reflect once the budget is finalized on a state level.
Alright, so twenty-nine. Thirty. Thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-three. Thirty-four. Thirty-five. Thirty-six. Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, I have one.
Alright, so thirty-seven.
Health Director, five-one-one-oh-one, reduce seven thousand dollar increase to fifteen thousand sixty dollars. So that would be a reduction of five thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Second.
So motion is to cut five-one-one-zero-one by five thousand four hundred and forty dollars. No discussion?
You know my reasons.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else? Seeing none, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting to cut it by five thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Three yeas, ten nays.
I forgot to mention, Counselor Rivera is back online.
He got home, he got home quick.
Quick, he. That one doesn't pass.
Nah, I zoomed in from my headphones.
His headphones. Thirty-nine.
All I know is, I'm glad he voted for the police contract, because he may not make it home.
Forty.
Actually, I had one on thirty-nine.
Go back to thirty-nine, please.
Yeah, the, the new overtime line of five-one-three-zero-zero to reduce that by four thousand, and this allegedly was because they wanted to get away from comp time and now start paying overtime. Comp time's built into the current budget, and that's not, that's going to be budget neutral. Four thousand in new overtime is going to be now an added cost. So I, I would not support that. Page thirty-nine, yeah. That's the overtime line of five-one-three-zero-zero, reduced by four thousand.
There a second?
Second.
Okay.
So basically, what the argument here is, is keep the current comp time policy, which is, if you work extra, you would get a different time off, but that's done on budget, as opposed to now paying overtime in layu of comp time. That was the argument in favor of it, so. This is going to increase the budget by four thousand doing it this way.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would make an argument that if they have to pay overtime, that they might go overtime less. Nobody wants comp time. It just means you're working for free, and you may or may not take the time off that you've accrued. So I would not vote to get rid of this, just because I think it helps keep their budget in order.
Counselor McGivern?
The issue with comp time is, when comp time is used, the person is paid for staying home. So if you earn comp time and then you get to take time off later, it's essentially the same thing, and less work gets done. For four thousand dollars for, you know, a department that provides our senior citizens a lot of, a lot of service, I, I think it's worth it.
Counselor Bartley?
I'm sorry, do we have a personnel policy on comp time, Mr. President?
I don't have one before me, but we can get one.
Yeah, I, I just, it's one of those things where, you know, normally when I was in the public sector, I, I actually despise comp time. But, but if we, if the department heads are just making up a policy, I mean, helped or not, but it sounds to me like, you know, I'm not going to doubt my friend on that one. It sounds to me like they're making up a policy. And I don't know how they do that, other than we, something off books. So I guess, you know, Kelly's going to have to advise us a little more, and maybe we'll just file the appropriate order next time to figure that one out. But I, I didn't think we had comp time in the city, but I'll stand corrected. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, Counselor Rumbaletti?
Yep.
Michelle? Nope, she's not on. Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, basically, you know, apparently, this is, the, comp time has been, been used for quite a long time. For now, you know, I think we should keep the current practice. If there's an examination that's going to be not budget neutral and want to review it, then I suppose there should be some review of the policies. But, you know, say, a new line of four thousand for overtime to minimize the need to use comp time. That was the argument in favor of, of this. That was the, that was the explanation. So ultimately, it's just going to add four thousand to the budget. I mean, again, we could argue, you know, overtime in every department. I mean, it, it's just one of those things. We're just, it's another four grand, and here's five grand. And so, I mean, this is, this is, you know, I think you understand my point. You may not agree with my point, but at least you understand my point.
Alright, so seeing no one further, motion is to cut the four thousand. Clerk will call the roll.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Four yeas, nine nays.
Four nine, that does not pass. Forty. Forty-one. Forty-two. Forty-three. Forty-four.
Forty-four, I have one.
Alright, forty-four. Counselor Jordan?
Yep, Director, five-one-one-oh-one, reduce the seven thousand dollar twelve, eleven or twelve percent pay raise to a two percent pay raise. Reduce seven thousand to thirteen hundred, reduce it by five thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion is to cut five-one-one-zero-one by five thousand seven hundred. Seconded, any further discussion?
Yeah, briefly.
Counselor Jordan?
Yep, fiscal year twenty-two, this position paid fifty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. It was then increased up to sixty-three thousand dollars, and now it's being increased again, or proposed, to seventy thousand dollars. So again, you know, I just marvel at the massive size of these increases, and that some of these positions are just being singled out for these exceptionally large increases. After, this position's already was given a fifty-five hundred dollar increase, which was ten percent. And now, we're in for, what, eleven, twelve percent more? Must be watching a different budget than I'm watching. So this would give it two percent that all the other employees are getting.
Alright, seeing, hand up, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I see that we're coming in on the end of the various individual raises. And I just want to say, on behalf of the taxpayers, that for raises of this size to be approved for some of the higher paid department heads, I just think is really unfair to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Seeing no one further, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the fifty-seven hundred dollar cut.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado Vales?
No.
McGee?
No.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy Rumbaletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
No.
Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
No.
Four yeas, nine nays.
Your vote, that was approved. Forty-five. Forty-six. Forty-seven. Forty-eight. Forty-nine. Fifty.
Fifty, I have one. Reduce the repair and maintenance sewer by one hundred and thirty-five thousand, that line, to increase that by a new one thirty-five.
Second.
Alright, so motion is to cut five-two-four-two-zero by one hundred and thirty-five thousand. No discussion?
Yep. Basically, on this one, you know, we're going to have, hopefully, a conversation once we get information as to how much the seven point three million dollars is related to general fund spending. That question's been sitting out there for months at this point, and I understand that people know the answers, and we're hoping that those answers are going to be shared at some point with the, the rest of us. So I would argue, some of those funds could be transferred into what I get they're trying to do, which doesn't make, makes reasonable sense, which is to use an average on repair and maintenance sewers, assuming that it's for subsurface, actual sewer lines, not street surface repairs. It's street surface level repairs, as well as street sweeping, that should be paid for out of the general fund. And those expenses should be moved out, and then they could fund this and leave a portion of that here. So that, those dollars need to be extracted and put back over onto the general fund. And then that's going to go a long way towards balancing this. Then there's a whole litany of other questions about what's happening with revenues and, and everything else that we'll get into at another date. But this one thirty-five is not justified yet, at this point, for us to say, yes, let's just increase that by another hundred and thirty-five thousand. I would also note, you have a number of one-time increases in this area already, like the two-fifty increase on professional tech services, and all these different variables, like for example, the seven hundred and fifty thousand in one-time sewer changes, the two hundred and fifty thousand in professional fee services. Those are not the basis, one-time expenses for permanent increases in the budget. So in terms of rate increases, what we need to do is go back and go through together the sewer analysis study. Looking forward to having that discussion. There's an interesting amount of variances and surpluses and, and different points on that, and, and the collection rates, which also needs to be examined in there. But that's a more intense. Point is, at this point, we don't know that this one thirty-five is justified. We still have to answer the question about the seven point three million.
Counselor McGivern?
Well said, and good points, and I, I hope sometime next year that the city council, the Board of Public Works Commission, the mayor, come to grips with this long debated issue of what should be in the wastewater treatment plant and what should not, should be on the city side of the, the budget itself, and come to grips with what the actual sewer rate should be to reflect the operations of the mandate, even with the unfunded mandates that we get from the federal government. It's, I think it's something that we all know we, we need to do in terms of the, the service and in terms of the Connecticut River cleanup itself. The, the one problem with, and I'm not, we, we started to talk about this with Mr. Rossi, but we didn't get too far. The, the one problem with, with the sewer budget right now, in this point in time, is, is running a deficit. And a deficit that, there was a deficit in fiscal twenty-twenty-three that is going to be taken off the recap sheet. There is a current deficit in fiscal, very high deficit in fiscal twenty-twenty-four. And whatever we don't make up as far as that deficit goes, is going to be placed on, on the property tax owner's backs as opposed to the rate payers. So even though I, I think in principle, I agree with Counselor Jordan, and I'm going out on the limit a little bit here, because we didn't really ask this to the, to the superintendent or to the auditor, but I'm pretty sure that by keeping this there, it will reduce that deficit, which will save property taxpayers some money this year, as we try to. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'm pretty sure. I know the deficit is there, and I'm pretty sure what we do for fiscal twenty-twenty-four to, to offset that deficit will help property taxpayers not pay something that's unfair on property tax and should be on the rate payer.
Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, again, the finance chairman, as always, is on point. The only thing I would state, by reducing the one thirty-five, reduces the quote-unquote on paper deficit, because it's increasing the budget now for this department. So if we cut this, the budget need, allegedly, from what they're projecting for revenue, which we still need to discuss, they put a placeholder number of eight point nine four five million down. We don't know that to be true. Yeah, in fact, as I understand it, they haven't even confirmed the revenue from last fiscal year, let alone project what the revenue is going to be for fiscal twenty-four. And as we know, we're only five months into fiscal twenty-four, so unless somebody has a magical crystal ball and knows exactly what the revenue's going to be for the remainder of this fiscal year, you don't know for a fact that the revenue is going to be eight point nine four five. So I would note that a couple points. One, two fiscal years ago, we had a six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar surplus. Last year would have been the, the prior year. We don't have reconciliation for twenty-three, by the way. Twenty-two, we would Twenty-two, we would have had a four hundred thousand dollar surplus, but because we had some one-time expenses, it went to a three-fifty deficit. So that's not reoccurring. So, you know, these are the things that we need to discuss, uh, when we get to that conversation. And looks like we're gonna have two good ones, one on Ezekiel, one on sewer, which are both big, important topics. But this technically, by reducing this now, would reduce the deficit in that account by one thirty-five in the meantime, because it's, it's reducing the earmark of appropriation to that department by one thirty-five. Until we figure it all out.
Counselor Bacon first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to further note that that two hundred and thirty-five thousand figure came out of a ten-year lookback, averaging in what was the single most extraordinary structural expense that occurred of that big break that cost, uh, three quarters of a million dollars. And so that extraordinary, um, expense, which I think could have, um, arguably have been a stabilization fund matter as an emergency, is what factored in to create that number of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That had not been considered in that fashion before. I would also like to further note, because it's been stated over and over that the sewer deficit is what's causing the tax levy to increase. So I would like to point out that it has been stated to us that the Sewer Enterprise Fund has been in deficit five out of the last ten years. And in light of that, I would also like to point out that it did not affect the tax levy. What it affects is the certification of the free cash. And in the discussions that we've been having recently, you would think that the Enterprise Fund is the only fund that reduces our free cash. But all of us sitting in this room know very well, we have written off hundreds of thousands of dollars of improperly accounted for grants over the years, along with penalties and fines and other things for things that have not been properly completed in offices. All of these things factor in to reduce our free cash. So, I'm really thinking it is inaccurate to keep talking about the Sewer Enterprise Fund like that is what is breaking the back here. Because what we're doing is expanding the size of this government, while we're also increasing the fees to the point where we're breaking the back of the sewer owners. We're breaking the back of the septic owners as well. Because we're not only talking about the Sewer Enterprise fees here, somebody talked about a stormwater fee that they have in Chicopee. Well, I will say that to the stormwater fee. In Chicopee, everybody's on sewer service. In Holyoke, six hundred families who pay some of the highest taxes in the city are paying for their own sewer service. So, before we start talking about all of these things in these simple terms, that it's gonna increase the tax levy, we need to get the answers to the questions. One, what are those fees that are shared by all of us, which we will all happily pay? And I hear the number has been given to somebody, but it has not come forth to the ordinance committee. So I will say one more time, for public consumption, when we get the answer to the question, we can take the matter up. These are reasonable questions asked by a reasonable and responsible committee and committee chair, and they are owed the respect of an answer. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. Um, again, trying not to get into the long-term argument, which I do agree we need, we need to fix, um, in this particular area. But the, the deficit is, is caused by a rate, a sewer rate that doesn't reflect the, the budget itself. This, my understanding, is a supplemental budget, and it's a different revenue source, source that the mayor's using. That's why it will de, uh, decrease the, uh, projected deficit for twenty-twenty-four. And I just think it's important that these property taxpayers that we're talking about aren't doubled, you know, double-dipped with paying both, especially those that pay a sewer rate, and then find part of their property tax dollars being used to pay an expense in the budget, because the sewer rate doesn't reflect the true operation, uh, costs themselves. So I, I'm, I'm a little bit out on the limb, but I know I'm on target, that this one thirty-five will reduce that deficit this year, as we try to figure out, or as everybody tries to figure out what they hap, what's gonna happen next year.
Anyone further? Counselor Jordan?
Yeah, the only thing I would mention is, allegedly, on the recap, to help explain it, is there's a one point one seven line reduction, as allegedly the difference between the ten point one one seven two nine number on the bottom of page fifty-one. That minus the projected revenue that they're saying, which is this eight-nine-four-five million number, that's allegedly what's going on. If you notice on the mayor's ear, uh, summary, he's calling the one-one-seven-two deficit. So theoretically, if you reduced the ten-one-one-seven-two-nine by a hundred and thirty-five thousand, the difference would be smaller. So, that, that, that was my point, for now. And we'll, we'll see what, how it all shakes out in the end.
Counselor McGivern.
And if we increase the sewer rate, those numbers would change too, by the projected revenues coming into the department. So if this a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is revenue other than the sewer rate itself, it therefore is not a deficit, but reduces the deficit.
Well, if I, go ahead, answer that question. So, the one thirty-five is the expense side. If we had a sewer rate of, say, six hundred thousand dollars more, then that would reduce theoretically by, but raise it on the revenue side. This is reducing the expense, so it's the delta between these two. So we're reducing the expense by one thirty-five to be determined on what the rate will be of that, do we go up six hundred, do we go up three hundred? Where there's gonna be a whole discussion about surpluses and one-time costs, and are their projections right, and all of that. I mean, there's, there's a whole study analysis and collection rates, and there'll be a lot of discussion on all that. But what this is saying is, we're gonna spend, this is saying, we're agreeing to spend a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of more money, because it's saying that we voted originally for a hundred grand, to spend a hundred grand for this line item. By us voting now, if we increase that by one thirty-five, we're now saying we're gonna spend two thirty-five on this line. This doesn't give a corresponding revenue. This is us agreeing to increase their budget by a hundred and thirty-five thousand. And what I'm suggesting to you is, that's, we're premature to do that yet. And the other point is, we might be able to take some of the seven point three and transfer it into that, if that is even what we wanna do. And by the way, that two thirty-five, that's a hypothetical number. There's no bill waiting for us on that. That's like a contingency. It might happen, it might not happen, we don't know. That's, it's a like a new policy of theirs. They'd like to just have a contingency there of two thirty-five.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only other point that I would like to make is, in looking at those budget sheets, it appears that what we're now calling the one point five million dollar deficit in the sewer fund occurred because in the first rendition, it was assumed that the higher sewer rate would go through. So that appears to have been factored into the revenue numbers. So then to take the current rate and then properly articulate what it would have been, is actually the number it should have been in the first place. So to then talk about that as a deficit, it was a mathematically created deficit because an assumption was used based on numbers that were never approved. So I just think there's too much, um, confusion in how the numbers have been laid out and how they've been debated, and we really need to get to some more clarity. Thank you.
See, Counselor McGivern?
I surrender. I'll vote for the cut.
I'll just say one thing, when it comes to, hold on, hold on. When it comes to the sewer and the Ezekiel plan, there are outstanding questions to it. Outstanding unknowns. So to add to one thirty-five, which is an add-on from what we approved five months ago, with outstanding questions to it, really is not something I'm gonna vote for until we get all the answers to it. So with that, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the cut. If not, you're not cutting the one thirty-five.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
No.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalas?
No.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
No.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera?
He's not online.
Okay. Jenny Rivera?
No.
Tommen?
Yes.
Seven yeas, five yeas.
Your vote, you approve that one.
That's, uh, that's it for Jordan Coroner over here.
Fifty-one.
Sorry to disappoint, no more.
And then that is it?
Make a motion that we, uh, pass the first reading of the supplemental budget as amended.
Second.
Is to pass the first reading, to pass the supplemental budget as amended?
And technically, that approves the cuts.
Correct.
Right? Because we actually, because we've already approved, we have to, little, little-known fact, we also have to approve the reductions. Reductions, yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So, I, I just wanna say for the record, Mr. President, I voted in favor of, uh, over a million dollars in cuts this evening.
Well done, sir, well done.
Good job. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Are opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion to pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the budget as amended.
Bacon?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Walden Adalas?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
We could have some real fun here, counselors, you know? We could have some real fun here. Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
No.
Israel Rivera?
Not here.
Oh, he's in, Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tommen?
Yes.
Nine yeas, three yeas.
You approve that.
I'm sorry, what was the final?
What was it, five-three? I think we're missing a few.
No, I said nine.
Oh, nine, okay.
I call.
She had it right.
Nine-three. What am I, I'm sorry.
Uh, G, late-file G. Just to receive, send to finance?
What was, what was?
Oh, yes, please, that's the, um,
The updated.
The updated supplam, no, actually, that was just replacing what we did tonight. It's just a recap summary of what we just did. So just receive, yeah.
Is this receive late-file G, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sixteen D was recommended to refer to the full council, which was the budget that just, we just went through. So I think that was voted.
That's, that's what, yeah, we've taken care of that, yep.
Sixteen D was what we just voted on. Just, uh, clear things up here. All right, now let's get back to sixteen E. Command, if I answer, refer that the police department please provide a list with events and dollar amounts of received police detail paid overtime during the last six months. It's been complied with. Counselor McGivern.
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this was the order filed by Counselor Powell. Um, we had we had the Chief Pratt with us from the Police Department, we had the mayor with us. A number of questions were asked, and in essence, information was also provided, which I think is attached now, it was part of a separate item, line item during the, uh, the Finance Committee. But it outlined, um, the details, uh, private, uh, details, work details, uh, that have been paid, uh, more specific, I think, towards, uh, not-for-profits versus, uh, profit, uh, entities. Uh, was a healthy roundtable discussion. Um, eventually, uh, the committee just agrees that the, uh, the question of the order has been answered. And, uh, not everybody was satisfied with the, uh, with the answer, but I think it's, it's complied with as far as what we were asked to do.
Cut. All set? All right, so sixteen E, motion's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sixteen F, command, if I answer, refer that the Law Department provide a mandated quarterly report for, uh, YTD legal expenses, um, complied with. Counselor McGivern.
Uh, thank you. The cease-listener was president. Um, we did, um, receive the information, um, dollar-figure-wise, um, prior to, uh, prior to the committee meeting. And I, I apologize, I'm just trying to get my notes back together. But I believe it's, uh, four thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-two fifty-two cents. I'm not even sure if I'm reading the right number. But, uh, this was originally Counselor Bartley's order, and, uh, Lisa Ball did come before the committee and did talk about this. Uh, some of the details cannot be talked about in the public session yet, because the, uh, there's still some pending litigation out there.
Anything further, or Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna wait for Counselor Powell, a member of the committee, to get the total number, but I, I just wanna remind, th, this is a, uh, pretty straightforward order I, I filed about a year ago, asking for quarterly reports from our law department, Mr. President, for the, uh, monies that the city of Holyoke pays outside counsel relative to the lawsuit precipitated by, uh, a vote of the Holyoke Planning Board. And that vote pertained to, uh, property on, uh, uh, East Hampton Road at Law Cabin. So they, they took a vote, and the owners of, uh, Law Cabin, uh, and, uh, Delaney House and, uh, that, that whole group, uh, decided to appeal it to Superior Court. And our law department, uh, didn't wanna handle the case, and they gave it to outside legal counsel, again, by a vote of the Planning Board. It was not a unanimous vote of the Planning Board, but it was, it was a vote of the Planning Board. And so I'm just waiting for the, it was nice that they gave, uh, a supplemental, I, I said year-to-date on there, so that's it's, you know, slightly deceptive number that the Finance Chair gave, but he only gave the number, what, what he's provided. But, um, we, we've had, we've had well over a hundred thousand dollars in, in legal expenses paid to outside legal counsel um, due to, A, the law department not taking on the defense itself, and B, the, a vote of a, um, of the, of our volunteers on the planning board, uh, against, uh, corporate citizens called the Law Cabin and Delaney House. So I will again, uh, because I have to file the orders, um, I don't, uh, we filed one a year ago, Mr. President, and we simply asked for quarterly reports. And I get a, a huge sigh when I, when I file this order again from, uh, the law department, um, a massive sigh, like, my gosh, we have to do this again? I, I don't think it's a hard deal, um, especially we have to just simply ask the city auditor. Um, but, you know, we, we get it, and, um, um, I know that everybody's working real hard um, on, on this. I'm, I'm not sure how hard the, uh, outside counselors, but they're certainly billing pretty hard. So, uh, and that, um, and that matter is still pending. Um, it's still pending, um, in, in a public forum, so I, I don't know why we're, you, you know, we haven't had a litigation update in, in months. And, um, the last one we got wasn't great, but I'm looking forward to the next one. So, uh, I'll, I'll keep asking for these updates, um, but it's, it's not forty-seven hundred, uh, that maybe that was a, since a last bill. But it's, it's well, well in the six figures at this point. So, thank you.
One point to follow up. Um, there will be an executive session December fifth, uh, six PM. I, I talked to the mayor on getting updates on some legal stuff. That wasn't one of them, but, um, there were some other stuff that came up, so I just forgot it when you mentioned it, I was supposed to put that in the president's report, so.
President, you're always on point.
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Yeah, I, I know, just clarified, it, it's over two hundred thousand dollars in outside legal bills. But, but, but that's okay. I'm just, we're just, we're just looking, we're not judging. I'm not judging at all. Alls I'm saying is that, is that just for public consumption, the vote of the Planning Board to deny what they wanted to do with the Law Cabin, which is their right, cause the Law Cabin to file a lawsuit against the city, which is their right, our city law department chose not to defend the vote of the Planning Board, our city law department decided to farm it out to outside legal counsel, and outside legal counsel's now billed well over two hundred thousand dollars in legal expenses, and is ongoing. Thank you.
Anyone further? So this has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Uh, nineteen A, DGNR. Command DGNR was referred from Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority, summary of activities from November first, twenty twenty-one, to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Could we take nineteen A as a package with nineteen H?
Uh, spend rules tick up A and H. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? H, uh, from DGNR, who's referred, in order that Oped and the, uh, Hoyoke Redevelopment Authority attend an upcoming DGNR meeting, uh, on the urban renewal plan. That's complied with. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we were joined at, uh, in the October DGNR meeting by Tom Creed and Daphne Board on behalf of the Redevelopment Authority, along with staff from Planning and Economic Development. Um, I'll keep the comments brief, if, if folks want to go back and see the lengthier discussions, um, it was just a great opportunity to have updates. Um, we talked about the South Hoyoke Homes Project. Phase one is complete, and phase two is, um, in progress for funding and should be getting started hopefully soon, a lot of work on that. Um, two sixteen Appleton Street, we talked about wind development, the groundbreaking was actually yesterday. Um, phase one is eighty-eight unit, units for seniors fifty-five and up. Talked about the Mass Development Transformative Development Initiative, which is focusing on High Street right now, um, but overall, just a lot of great projects, um, underway, and we appreciate the updates. It's hard to believe the urban renewal plan passed a little over twelve years ago, so that's it.
Thank you. Anyone further? Seeing none, so A and H have been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B, Command DGNR, who was referred, in order petition, uh, for a new special permit. I recommend that the special permit be granted for a driveway in the front yard at one seventy-six Lincoln Street. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this special permit, um, is, was to widen the driveway with a turnaround in the front. Um, the homeowner purchased the house in twenty twenty-one and was not aware that she needed a permit in order to do this, um, so the work is actually already done. Um, but we did go through the, um, the different, uh, aspects of the special permit and determined that it does comply with the front yard landscape, open space requirement, um, complies with the surrounding neighborhood. It meets all the requirements of GPW, um, including the distance from the intersection, so that was important, it's right on the end of Lincoln Street. And the applicant and homeowner, uh, stated that she does not intend to use this, um, as parking, it's to turn around. Um, they have several cars, so there's enough room, um, and so the committee voted in favor, um, to approve the license, um, and, mm, that was it. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor Jordan?
You mean special permit, not license, right?
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah. A second que, no neighborhood opposition came forward that you're aware of? Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no one, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
She left the room.
Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalvez?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one. Nineteen C, Command DGNR, a special permit for rent-a-car per, uh, seven cray ave, uh, with the following conditions, so it'll be granted. There should be no more than fifteen cars on the lot. Hours of operation on Monday, Friday, from seven AM to six PM, Saturday, nine AM to twelve PM, closed on Sunday. No auto repairs on site, uh, no auto sales on site. Petitioner will be allowed to use the bay for the purposes of cleaning interior, uh, and rental vehicles. Uh, Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you. Um, so we were joined, um, by, uh, let me pull up my notes, we were joined by Kevin Colstead, um, from Enterprise Rent-A-Car. Um, he is not the owner, um, Ira Elfman is the owner, he owns auto, um, auto sales center next, that abuts it. Um, Kevin has been working with the planning department, they were the ones who, um, suggested that he apply for this use under this section, seven point two point thirteen. Um, basically, it's, uh, it's a car rental site, um, the plan is that it's mostly an office environment, um, with, as it was mentioned, uh, one car bay area, and that's specifically so that, um, the staff can just vacuum and clean the exterior before the next customer runs out the next car, it's not heavy detailing or anything like that. Um, and you went over the conditions, um, and there was no one who attended, um, again, for, in favor of, of the special permit.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, uh, appreciate that, that was a good summary. I'm just going to, uh, add to that a couple nuances. Uh, the, um, uh, the petitioner was, uh, really well-prepared, he's a complete professional, he's done this a lot. He, he's the actual owner, um, he's going to be renting from, uh, from Ira, and I just want to publicly thank Ira for, for bringing him to, uh, to Hoyoke, because that's why he's here. Ira's doing some marketing for the city of Hoyoke, uh, obviously for himself too, but it's going to bring in a business that really is going to fit in the flow, uh, with that side of North Hampton Street, when you have the, uh, the gas station, the full-service station there with, uh, car inspections on one side, and then Ira with his auto sales and car dealing on their side, and here we are with a rental car service, uh, right in the middle. I did ask a question of the law department, Mr. President, and, and there's no way that Mike could have answered that right away, and I, I never expected it, but our ordinance on this matter is, is pretty unclear, because it does not contemplate rental cars. Um, it, it contemplates, uh, motor vehicle repair, motor vehicle sales, um, so I ask, uh, I asked Mike to, uh, to look into that for us, so if, if this comes up again, we'll have another, um, we'll have a little clearer path for the, for the, for the special permit. Uh, the, uh, the petitioner came in, says he's going to, he's going to certainly create a few jobs, which are, these are enterprise, if you know anything about it, I've rented a lot of cars from them, they're, they're great, you know, starter jobs, and really in a professional environment, and they always do a, they always have a first-class, uh, employees, so they're going to, you're going to get a lot of good training, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited to have them coming to Hoyoke. It's going to take a, a few months for them to get up and running, they're going to dress up that building, which is, you know, a unique-looking building as it is, but, um, that's just another vote that we, we took here to support Ira, to support, again, his investment, his expansion of his business, uh, in that area of Ward Six, and, uh, it, I mean, really, just a credit, uh, really credit to, uh, to Hoyoke Eye and to the, and to the city as a whole, so, um, I, I think that the, um, the businessman that came in as a, as a chair, as a chair mentioned, uh, he's just, I mean, he just did a really great job of, uh, presenting his, uh, case. He came in with, uh, with all, all, all the, all the right, uh, items, and he certainly met all the standards in the, um, in the ordinance, so I was happy to support it. Thank you.
Anyone further? Counselor McGivern and Counselor Tomlin?
See, it's, it's better when you're closer to the president, he calls you first.
I saw the hand go.
I haven't had a word to say tonight yet, so I was just trying, yeah.
I, I should yield to Counselor Tomlin, but I've been, like, everything it was just said, I agree with, the, uh, committee was, um, did their job, the, the chair, Counselor Bartley, uh, we all asked the questions. Just so everybody knows that by going through this process, the special permit, we also reviewed a site plan, I'm sorry, a map of the plan itself, and, and talked about the parking places, he's, they're proposing fifteen cars, uh, tops, um, there's room for fifteen-plus, which would include employees, and, uh, there isn't a lot of onsite, um, it's, it's a lot of pickup and drop-off, it's not a lot of onsite, you know, of, um, generation of, uh, customers themselves, so it does, it does complement the entire parcel, and, and thankfully, other than the fact that the building they're using was my favorite Christmas shopping store for many years, over many different proprietors, I, uh, think it's good to see that it's going to stay on the, the tax rolls and create some, uh, some, uh, some, uh, jobs and create some, uh, certainly property tax for us.
Counselor Tomlin?
I'll be brief, uh, great chair, great, uh, great report, um, and everybody, what everybody said. I, actually, I was sitting in his office about, uh, three months ago, and he had talked about how he has that property, he wanted to do this, and, uh, just in the beginning stages, maybe, uh, let's get an oil change, and said he wanted to do this with the, uh, the building in the back, and I, I think it's a great addition for this, uh, area. Uh, he's a, is a great businessman, and, uh, the jobs that would be created there would really be good for the, uh, for the city, so very much in favor of this.
Yeah, just, just one more thing, if I can elaborate, all the content, conditions we put on the permit, the petitioner agreed with all of them, so those weren't anything we just made up, we, we talked it out, and he said it made a lot of sense, and so it makes sense for him, and it makes sense for that neighborhood, and it makes sense for the city.
Anyone further? Seeing none, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit with conditions as read.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordan? Oh. Jordan?
Yes.
Walden Adalvez?
Left the building.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Israel Rivera, where he left, Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one next?
Those of us still here get overtime?
Comp time.
Comp time, go.
Comp time.
We're going to start giving you a T in January.
Oh, we got it.
Ooh.
All right.
Woo.
Uh, Command DGNR was referred a special permit to convert basement into, uh, studio space at twenty Pearl Street. Uh, recommend that be granted with, uh, condition that a signed letter from the licensed architect be provided. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll keep it brief, because I'm sure folks will have stuff to add, but, um, I, this, the homeowner came to us, um, she has owned this home for a while, um, her son was in attendance on her behalf as well, um, and she would like to, uh, create a studio apartment in the basement of her home at twenty Pearl Street. Um, the main concern was about parking, um, we did hear from the, um, uh, the building department on that, um, the zoning officer, um, and so those, uh, issues seemed to be addressed. Um, the main thing that you mentioned as a condition was, um, the, the zoning law request that, uh, stamped or sealed architect plans are provided, um, and we did not have that last night. As far as I know, we still don't have that, and he did say he probably couldn't get it to us for today. Um, the last thing I'll add, though, is that there was one or two comments from the public, and both were in favor, um, no one was opposed to this, so we can leave it on the table for the next meeting, if we still want to wait for the architecture plans.
Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, ultimately, I'm going to make a motion to leave it on table, because we, it's not complying with the ordinance because of the architectural stamp, but overall, they, they did a great job. I, I, I really think this is a pretty unique ordinance too, because it allows, it, it's allowing, well, first of all, I want to say, the, the guy who wrote the deed originally, should be a guy named Attorney Bartley, did a great job on here, so who sold, who represented the seller of the property. I, I, I'm not sure why that wasn't mentioned in the report, but there, there I am, right in lights, it's pretty cool.
Wait a second, what was that again?
And then, uh, so, so we, but we heard, we had a great, great meeting with the petitioner, his, uh, mom and dad are going to, they, they loved the neighborhood, they're from, I forgot where they're from, um, eastern Mass area, and, uh, they love being here, and so they're, they're going to build out, and they showed some great photos too of the, uh, the basement apartment, and that's a nice feature to have, uh, but it's important to have it by the special permit, Mr. President, because it allows us to hear from the neighbors who were, who were, who were actually supportive. But alas, say, the ordinance requires a architectural stamp on the drawings. He does have a drawing by a reputable architect, but it's not stamped, and he said he would not be able to produce it, so, uh, and once everybody's done, I'll just make a motion to leave it on the table, just pending the, uh, pending that final piece.
Well, I think that's what Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti did do, is suggest a motion to...
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, anyone further?
So I'll second the motion, just in case.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Bacon, I knew there was someone, sorry. Counselor Bacon?
I'm all set, I'm all set, thank you.
All right, so motion is to table nineteen D until we get the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Nineteen G, from DGNR, special permit, non-conforming to rebuild old garage, same footprint at fifteen Brookline Ave. Um, recommend to grant the special permit. Counselor Murphy Rumbelletti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do you see it?
We skipped a couple?
Hmm, oh.
B, this is G?
No, uh, it is updated, we didn't, they didn't get referred out of committee last night. Um, so this is for fifteen Brookline Avenue, we were joined by, uh, the contractor who's working on the property and the homeowners, the Matlocks, um, and, uh, they are, as it says, they're rebuilding their old garage on the exact same footprint, um, it ended up being more of a project that they had anticipated, um, they're using the same dimensions, um, with a new reinforced pad. Um, there was one abutter that did submit comments, they said they appreciated the investment, and they had no problem with it, and they could see it from where they lived, um, but yeah, other than that, I'm sure there's more to add. Thank you.
Anyone for it? Counselor Jordan, first?
Yeah, just very briefly, um, the Matlocks have lived at this address for a long, long time, just really good people, and for them to be able to get to a point where they're able to rebuild this old garage and to, uh, fix it and put it in a nice condition in this, effectively the same way it used to be, um, is, is great, you know? So obviously, this is the type of basic home improvement that we're trying to encourage, and, uh, we appreciate them making this investment to make it look a, a world nicer, so I think it's going to be a real compliment to the neighborhood.
Counselor Bartley, then Counselor McGivern?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to follow up on that, uh, it's a, uh, we, we went through all the steps that they had a, so we, we heard, not from the Matlocks exactly, but we heard from their contractor, who, who did a really great job presenting, and, uh, and, uh, we, we went through all the pages relative to the, to the permit, uh, they hit all the points and, and satisfied all the crit, criteria. In essence, the, uh, neighborhood also, I think we heard from one person, maybe two, I don't recall now, but, and they were, uh, they were fully supportive, and I think specifically the party said, because it's going to increase the value of the house, that'll bring up the neighborhood as well, so, so that, those are, I didn't, I don't know the Matlocks as a prior speaker does, but, uh, but they, uh, they seemed like they were gung-ho and they were ready to, ready to take, tackle this, so, um, I appreciate their, their investment. As I say to everybody that comes in here, I always appreciate their, uh, their investment in the city, because it, it makes the city grow and expand in a positive manner. Thanks.
Counselor McGivern.
Um, the right thing to do, I'm in favor of it, I'm voting in favor of the special permit, I understand the, the nonconforming, uh, use approach to this, uh, to this issue, but it, it does, you know, cause a little bit of expense to the, uh, to the petitioner and, and my thoughts and the contractor agreed with me is, it would've been much simpler if it was just a, uh, through the Board of Appeals, a variance change were a hardship because the garage was built, you know, before zoning, it doesn't meet the setbacks of what would now be our zoning ordinance, therefore, something has to be done, Board of Appeals was, was a better solution if you ask me, but the, uh, city chose to put it before us this way and it's the right thing to do, allow the garage to be rebuilt.
All right, see no one further, clerk will call roll if you vote yes, you're voting for the special permit.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Givner?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Maldonado Velez? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Coelho?
Yes.
Israel Rivera? Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
You vote, you approve that one, 19. Commande, uh, dGNR was referred that TJ O'Connor be invited to some committee to discuss how they serve the animal population, including struggles they face and what Hoyok can do to help, recommend it's been complied with, Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, we were joined by Lori Swanson, um, the executive director of TJO, um, uh, Animal Control, um, they work with the city, uh, closely and I'll let, um, Counselor Anderson Burgos discuss his order as the maker of the order, um, but yeah, I'm, I'm not even gonna, you go ahead, I don't want to have us all repeat each other.
Yeah, no, I'll be very, very brief, going on 10:35, so, um, listen, we, Jeff and I went to go and, uh, pick up our new baby and met with her and she went over some of the things that, you know, they offer to Hoyoke and I was unaware, so I just wanted to bring her in, have her come in and, and go over, um, those details, you know, so that we can keep our, our constituents informed.
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, I'm gonna add to that, I, I think it was a great order and it's, it's really important, that's a, that's a purpose of the, one of the big purposes of the committee i- is the way it's, it's been set up now the last period of years, is to allow people a, a pathway for them to come to us so that we can hear from e- entities that impact Hoyoke, um, and I know, I know speaking to, to the, the director, uh, as I have offline and in that, she's, she's appreciative and I know she wants, wants to come back and tell more about, uh, TJO and how it works in the city of Hoyoke and, uh, how they can do, uh, more work in the city, so she answered the questions that I had and, uh, I hope we have more of these, uh, orders coming in, because I, I think it's one of the funnest parts of being a city councilor, so really to hear from people, uh, that impact Hoyoke and it, you know, it gives us, me anyhow, an opportunity to learn, um, from, from others, so, thank you.
The motion that's been complied with, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right, we're on to motions, orders, resolutions, don't debate it, send it to committee.
All right, 22 from Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, Mal Velez, Rivera Rivera, or that the city
council sign support the attached resolution to create a state authorized cultural district for at least five years, be named the Puerto Rican, Puerto Rican Cultural District, do you want to send it?
It's a resolution, so, DGR, it's just a resolution.
I think they usually go to public service, don't they, or am I wrong on that one?
I've done some resolutions, but I'm, I'm cool with whatever.
Do we get, with the resolutions already printed out?
Yeah.
Yeah, so would you send it to?
Sure.
Yeah, we could send it to public service, have a meeting, uh, in, in December, early December.
All right, so, public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Who said you were a lame duck?
23.
Hard work, chairman, right?
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, or that the DPW look into traffic comment increasing safety measures, uh, Sergeant Street in St. Jerome, uh, motion we receive.
Could this go with the, was there just some we talked about tonight about this? There's a different one, didn't we just do this?
Public safety, it's the same thing.
They fit, they, they filed order with this one?
No, it was a...
It was a different one.
It was an erroneous petition, uh, for...
Yeah, right.
Oh, yeah, petition, it's not for speed, if you read it, it's not, it's for, for this.
Okay, this is different, okay.
So, 23 to public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
24 from Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, at the city council, according to Master of Law, so this is for 736 Dwight Street, dGNR.
Just a, a request.
Yep.
Um, I, I know there's, there's a lot of talk about little tax payments and a lot of things being worked out through OPED, uh, I think through the Law Department and negotiations under 30B, um, I, I think we need to iron something out, um, it's, it's one thing when there's a, a for-profit, there's one thing when there's a not-for-profit or a semi-for-profit, but there's been some looks-like language that's going from one extreme to the other extreme that would, uh, cause the, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs to owe like eighty thousand dollars a year to open up a youth center, and I don't think that's what we're talking about when we say in lieu of taxes, so I was hoping we could have the people who negotiated this on behalf of the mayor before the committee to discuss this when we, uh, bring the Boys and Girls Club in.
All right, so motion is to send to dGNR with a request from Legal as well as...
I think OPED is in the middle of this, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, all those opposed?
Aye.
25, uh, this one is another one for 118 Newton Street, so this would also go to dGNR?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
26 from Counselor Puelo, at DPW, please consider adding a, uh, portable toilet at, uh, Springdale Park next to the main, uh, for the baseball field, so, spring season, so motion we receive, adopt, send to parking rec. All those in favor?
Aye.
27 from Counselor Puelo, uh, DPW, please explore a sidewalk, a sidewalk slash walking area along the hill or Lower Westfield Road, um, so, wanted to receive, sent to DPW, public safety?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, 28 from Counselor Puelo, Counselor Bartley, at the mayor, please appropriate the funds needed for the construction, feasibility, land survey required for the property at the top of Hill on St. Vincent's, so this would be to receive, refer to the mayor.
Yeah, no, I'll receive, uh, man, okay, yeah, just, my, my motion be to receive, refer to, uh, uh, OPED and the mayor, uh, to circle back and if I could just go a second, it's what?
A second, okay.
There's a very brief comment on this, we, we've had this before, it's for a while, it's the presidency members, we, we had the property, uh, transferred, uh, three years ago from the school department, uh, we, we haven't, uh, so now it's on the city side of the government and we haven't done anything with it, so it's at the corner of, um, St. Vincent and Eagleside Avenue, our former city engineer, Mr. Parent, he's, I've got documented, he, he said two or three buildable lots, so duplexes or whatever, so it's not, it's, and it's residential only, I mean, this day and age, why are we not moving, but I'm gonna go even one step further, if the city would be so gracious as to consider declaring this surplus, you can RFP it and have the requirement that the winner of a bid conduct a survey and spend the money, so there's no real reason for, and, and you can say that the city engineer has to approve it prior to anything, so, there's no real reason for the, for us to sit around now for three years with a little touch of creative thinking and, and, you know, OPED can talk to the Law Department and they can explain how all this works, I, I'm sure readily easily, and, and speak, then speak to Jamie, and then you can start to get this, uh, get this RFP together, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know, really know what the holdup is, uh, other than we're not focused on it, but I've been very humble, uh, the whole time, I've quietly gone about it, we had success, it took a minute to get it out of the school department, but we did it and, uh, and we accept, they voted, uh, unanimously, by the way, uh, after a while, to send it over to us, and so we accepted it, and now we have this parcel that is, and I brought developers myself and real, and commercial realtors, uh, and they think it's a, they, they're ready to bid on it, they want to buy it, they want to develop it, they want to create housing, I, I'm not sure where, where the, and right now it's a derelict lot, it's all twisted vines and jungle and, you know, bottles and all the rest of that, and it just sits there, so I'm not getting what the delay is, and if there's, and if there's something about money, you, we don't need the, the money, developers will come in and do that work, they'll pay for that work, because they want to develop the site, so, um, yeah, I'm confused by it and, you know, I'm a very patient person for the most part and, uh, but in this day and age, Mr. President, when we know we have a housing crunch and we have a possibility of creating two or three possible duplexes in a neighborhood that's all two family homes, I, I'm, and, and within easy walking distance to, uh, to a school, I'm not getting what the problem is, um, and it can't be from, um, you know, over, overwhelmed with developments coming to the city, I, I don't think that's the, I don't think that's the deal, so, let's hope that, um, you know, maybe some of these words will, uh, will, will reach receptive ears and, and will get some traction going forward, thanks.
All right, so motion received, sent to OPED, Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I, I can remember recalling this about two years ago, working on this with Counselor Bartley and talking, I think, uh, Counselor Murphy and, uh, it's, it's a great lot, um, and if you makers don't mind, uh, if I could put my name on that order.
Oh, please do.
Anything I can do, if you want me to make a call, I mean, I'm, I'm on my, uh, last lap here, so, anything I can do to help out, I'd be happy to.
Just, just, if I may, just through the chair to Counselor Tomlin, you're not on your last lap, uh, for one, but second off, anything that we can do to sort of advocate and we, the, the, it really should go to Mr. Vega and, and Mr. Garcia to, um, to come, and Counselor McGivern, by the way, had this, in fact, we talked about it in finance.
Yeah.
So, and it, it came on a finance and it's approved, but yet we wait months and months, so, I mean, I'm not, I'm not quite seeing it, but, yeah, we'll keep trying, thank you.
All right, so to the mayor and OPED, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
29 from Counselor Puelo, uh, we consider crafting an ordinance for requirements expenditures of funds of police special event lines and requirements, example, committee organized event, private businesses, alcohol served, et cetera.
Ordinance?
Ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
30 from Counselor Puelo, that we consider a ballot question to determine if the term of the office of mayor should be reduced to two years.
Charter rules.
Charter rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Puelo, that all individual private businesses that benefit from taxpayer, uh, police department special events line within the last year, please be billed for said, uh, said liked and other private accounts holders requesting overtime.
Receive, send to mayor.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
32 from Counselor Jenny Rivera, the handicap sign be at 34 North Summers, so send to ordinance?
Ordinance.
All those in favor?
The disability commission.
Copy to disability.
Copy to disability. Uh, 33 from Counselor Tomlin, Counselor Bacon, order that review of the ordinance on the soldiers memorial commission be done to update language.
Ordinance.
Ordinance and a law, copy to Law Department?
Copy to Law, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselor Bacon, order that, uh, PD conduct a speed study on Lower, uh, Homestead Ave., motion be receive, adopt, send to...
Decide, adopt and send to PD?
Uh, Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley?
May I just, to the maker, may I, A, add my name and B, make a friendly amendment that we just kind of have a speed study on both sides of Westfield Road, on, on Homestead Avenue, um, and then, one last thing, um, I, I hope the president has noticed, the influx of mass state police in the city in the last month and a half has been unbelievable, and if you're a, I mean, Trooper Brown told me, uh, you know, Bartley, I, you know, he was at the top of South Street for three hours, I can't move, because there's so many cars going through, through Ward Three with, uh, unregistered, you know, un, you know, stickers, stickers expired, no registration, no licenses, I mean, so it's like, it's like, uh, he goes, and I, uh, you know, I pulled, I, I pulled him over, well, not really, he was pulled over, but I pulled over next to him, and, uh, and so we, we had a great conversation, what, and he says, you know, get ready for more, get ready for more troopers in the city, I just, I met with a, a trooper today from, from Granby, she, she's, I, we're, we're gonna be up on Homestead Avenue on a regular basis, right at the main gate of HCC for the truckers booming down there, uh, at all nights, all hours of the day, so...
How about the other end too?
Boo hoo, I mean, so boo hoo, get ready for a ticket, so, just behave yourself and you won't get one.
They shouldn't be down the south end at night, yeah.
So, 34, adding Counselor Bartley and adding, uh, Westfield Road.
No, the, no, the length of Homestead from, uh...
Length of...
Lower and upper.
Yeah. Thank you. And to report back to city council, I, if we could just amend it, just say report, don't, don't just like leave it out in the ether, so just a friendly amendment to report back to city council in, I don't know, three months. That's my other friendly amendment.
Second.
Thank you.
And adding to report back in three months, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
35 from Counselor Bacon, remove the dead tree at 137 Whiting Farms Road, motion receive, adopt, send to...
Decide, adopt, send to the forester.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Counselor Bacon, the police department provide an updated summary of enforcement activities by Hoyoke and state police, uh, on Homestead Ave., so motion be receive, adopt, send to PD to get an update.
And send, send to state police.
Do I send it to public safety?
Great idea.
Well...
For Bacon to report on.
I'd rather receive, adopt and send it to, directly to the police.
Okay, so receive, adopt to get a report back.
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
37 from Counselor Bacon, at, uh, I-91 exit lane to the mall, install a flexible lane delineator or prevent people from illegally crossing, so...
So, I'd like to receive, adopt and send to DPW and copy it to public safety.
Okay, so receive, adopt, send to DPW, copy to public safety, anyone else?
Yes, and if I could amend my own order, I'd also like to add these, um, delineators to be added to the right-hand lane of Route 202 as you head toward Applemont Highway, because people are passing people on the right on the closed lane.
One?
So, can we add that also?
I'm just writing it down. All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 38 from Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that the DPW engineer review, uh, placement and/or address of the tree obstructing the stop sign at the intersection of St. Jerome, so, receive, adopt, send to DPW, copy to public safety?
Yeah, copy to, yeah, copy to public safety, but engineer as well.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
39 from Counselor Anderson Burgos, order that review to consider blinking yellow, uh, left on northbound traffic on North Hampton Street at Hamden, um, so motion be...
Alarm division.
Alarm division.
Fire department and city engineer.
So, to the engineer and alarm department, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 40 from Counselor Bartley, Counselor Puelo, DPW repair the guardrail at Jones Ferry Road, motion be receive, adopt, send to DPW?
That's, that's the motion, it's receive, I, I hope I, I don't have it in front of me, Todd, but I said to put up a street sign too on the top of the street for Jones Ferry Road.
Yeah, I'll have to say, install, install a sign where the road merges.
Yeah, there's no street sign on there, that, that's Route Five, so, it's kind of a mystery, it's what the street name is, so...
I didn't take it.
Receive, adopt, refer.
All should receive, adopt and send to DPW, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 41 from myself, order that, uh, present proclamations to the wardies, uh, that was at the, uh, Wretchensthal ceremony, it's already been done, but just procedurally, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That's done, thank you for allowing that. All right, 42 from Counselor McGee, order that the city or school, uh, department install a fence at the back entrance to Ian White, send it to, actually, I have a motion to receive, adopt and send it to DPW and the school department.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
43 for myself, order that the youth task force be established with a stipend program to allow teens to receive a payment and participate in community-wide civic engagement and volunteerism across anti-violence and gun violence activities, uh, send to public safety.
Can, I just, um, I know you said in here, can, uh, Boys and Girls Club and Girls Inc., can you also invite, and Los A, because they do have the youth task force?
Yeah, and I, I found out they were working on this as well, so this was a constituent in Ward Seven who reached out with regards to Ezekiel Plan and everything else, so they were offering this up as helpful suggestion, so, adding them on and send to public safety, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From myself, order that the, uh, personnel post, uh, city council at large appointments to community preservation, which I think we did, right?
Yeah.
All right, so this is the order to post position for the CPC, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then I'll go to public service when they come in, yep, all right, 45 from Counselor McGivern?
Make a motion to suspend rules to take up 45, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 55 and 56 as forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-five and fifty-six as a package, refer to committee on finance.
Suspend a reading. Or bridge reading, should say.
Motion is to take up as a package, all those mentioned, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six was... Let's see here, oh no, sorry, that's, forty-five is forty-five thousand from the Friends of the HOYO Council on Aging.
Finance?
They're all gonna go to finance, I'm just giving a brief reading. The twenty-twenty-four Road Safety Program, thirty-nine thousand eight eighty, forty-eight is the ten thousand from Public Health Partners and Community, forty-nine is E nine-one-one Dispatch, fifty thousand, two ammunition, fifty is one hundred sixty-four thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-seven cents from capital stabilization to parks capital lay equipment, fifty-one is capital stabilization, sixty thousand five hundred to parking outlay vehicles, fifty-five is three million one hundred eighty thousand ARPER revenue losses, so that's for the budget.
That's going to finance, right?
Yeah, everything's going to finance. Two hundred thousand for the community planning grant for twenty-twenty-three, all those to finance, all those in favor?
Under discussion, Mr. President, I know, I don't wanna bend your rule, but, just a note, I mean, finance will meet on, hopefully on December fourth, someone who's not here right now stole November twenty-ninth from the finance committee, we won't look at Mr. Israel Rivera's desk over there, but we have a lot to get out, it's the end of the year, end of the calendar year, but we have a lot to get out before we set the tax rate, we have the CPA, we're waiting for clarification from the Law Department about, do we have to vote on it before we actually vote on the ballot question, which I'm still trying to figure out what that means, and you said there's gonna be an executive meeting on the fifth, because we also have tax classification with the assessors need to get it to the tax collector.
They're on Tuesday, the twenty-eighth.
On the twenty-eighth, but the vote for us will be the fifth.
Yep.
I'm just thinking, that's a long evening, you know, to do an executive session.
Tonight's a long evening.
It is, and they're not getting shorter, but they will be.
They will be.
Just one for that.
Couple of things have come up for Legal that we really need to discuss.
I'm sure. So we can skip a couple other things, I guess.
I'll do what the will of the body wants.
We'll follow your lead, Mr. President.
Alright, so all to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Forty-six, back to that one, counsel, accept the donation of forty-one dollars from the Hitchcock Press, Counsel McGivern?
Yes, thanks to our administrative assistant who went out to get some proclamations printed, it's been a long time, I guess, since we've actually asked this, and Jeff tells us that he did go to Hitchcock Press, local company, for forever, great corporate citizen, and they actually sent the printed forms back and gave them to the city as city council as a donation, so with accordance to mass general finance law, we need to accept that officially as a legislative body and as a mayor.
Alright, so motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to pass the second reading?
Just back a second, clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for the donation.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Left the room.
Okay. Bartley?
Dwiddling, yes.
Givner? Jordan?
Yes.
Maldonado? McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Hey, Mr. President, I asked, sorry.
That's okay, nine yeas.
Alright, so-
I asked the administrative assistant to write up a thank you note, you can sign on behalf of all of us, I'm sure you would do that.
Am I gonna write everyone's name, like?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just making sure.
Madam Clerk, can you record me as a yes, please?
Will do.
Alright, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, suspend rules, take up as a package?
So move.
All those in favor, all opposed? Fifty-two, twenty-nine thousand two hundred six dollars and fifty cents from sergeant, patrolman to injured on duty, fifty-three, twenty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents from sergeant, patrolman to injured on duty, and then fifty-four, twenty-six thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty cents from patrolmen, sergeants to injured on duty, motion we receive, adopt, pass the first reading, Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, we do this for every pay period and so it happens just about every one of our meetings, we're moving line items of salary dollars from one line item to injured on duty to reflect when public safety officers were out because of injured on duty, some are long-term, most are very short-term.
So the first one's nine, second one's ten, next one's nine. So motion pass first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion pass the second, clerk will call if you vote yes, you're voting for fifty-two, fifty-three and fifty-four.
Bacon?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy Rumbelletti?
Yes.
Puelo?
Yes.
Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Ten yeas, unanimous vote.
Your vote, you approve that one, we're on to the late files, we're almost there. A from Counsel Bartley, Counsel Puelo, DJNR committee, meet with the city officials responsible for managing our parking enforcement staff, the staff has been repeatedly threatened with physical violence, so, public safety?
Well, how about public service, isn't this a personnel matter?
No, it's not.
No?
It, that's why, it was kinda a hybrid thing, so that's why I just wanna send it to DGR right now, just so-
To DJNR?
Yeah, just so we can just have a chat about it and we'll expand upon it then, thank you.
Alright, so DJNR, A, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 B from myself, order that the city plant a tree in front of City Hall on the Dwight Street side, to make it a permanent site for the Christmas tree, we're getting reports that we're running a lot of options, so other communities have done it, just as a suggestion.
Yeah.
No.
I'm just kidding.
So if you plant one-
Just make sure it's an outdoor tree when you spend, there was a little problem with the last one, it turned out it was an indoor tree that they put outside.
We're having trouble, one, with getting, couple issues.
Well, you started this tall, I mean, by, what, twenty or thirty Christmases from now, we should be all set, right?
Oh yeah, if you get a small tree, challenge.
Yeah, you know, we go like this tall, you know, in about twenty, thirty years.
Bait it in committee.
You transplant a teenager, you don't have to go with a sap.
Alright, so what? Public service, they're bringing it up.
Public service.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Bacon, that a light be added to crosswalk at Homestead in Sterling, drivers are not stopping when pedestrians are crossing, so receive, adopt, send to DPW?
Yes, please.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel Givner, per constituent request, install handicap sign, so that be two forty-seven walnuts, receive to ordinance-
Ordinance and copy to disability.
Copy to disability, all those in favor?
Aye.
Order that the city council invite in all newly elected, or he did that?
Yeah, that's a doubt.
I, the, for myself, that a stipend be added to the ordinance salary schedule C for ten thousand dollars, so to ordinance, all those in favor? Oh, to ordinance, yeah, all those in favor, all of the posts, and, we got there, we're at the end.
Oh, very good.
Motion is to adjourn, cultivate it.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody, enjoy.
Thanksgiving. Good night.
Have a good night.